To join us in the salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're only going to use one alternate.
Alternate Salazar will be sitting in for the absent commissioner. Uh, I'm sorry? Well, they're down there.
Alright.
I'll give it a few minutes. In case of fire, there are two ways to exit the chambers. To my left, you exit through the council chamber doors, turn left, walk down a flight of stairs and out of the building. Or the best way perhaps is at the rear of these chambers through the double door and again, outside of the building. When you're outside of the building, walk a safe distance away from the building for your own safety. Secretary, please take the roll.
Charles Durin.
Here.
Charles Ladd.
Here.
Nick LaFicus.
Here.
Mary Scott. Virginia Higley.
Here.
Ken Nelson.
Here.
Linda DeGray.
Here.
Sarah Gruber.
Here.
Guillermo Salazar.
Here.
And Richard Suzak is here.
Again, alternate Salazar will sit in for the absent commissioner. Uh, let's see, approval minutes June 7th. This is a special meeting? Is it? No, it's a regular meeting, okay.
Regular meeting. So moved. Second.
Motion's made and seconded, any additions, errors, or omissions?
I didn't find any.
Well, that's very good. Okay, then, all in favor? Opposed? It's unanimous.
Yep, all abstained.
One abstention. Sorry, I didn't ask for it. Okay, minutes for the, for the, uh, June 14th. This was a special.
Also so moved.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded, any additions, errors, or omissions?
It's altogether well too.
Okay. I think, uh, just, if we can, uh, somewhere around there, we did open it to the public and some of the public spoke. And I think that's important that, uh, we put that in there sometimes. I don't know where you'd put it.
We're sharing the book here. So I thought I, I thought there was something in there about, um, a letter, maybe, I may be-
Oh, there's a letter in there.
Yeah.
Later, but not in here.
Okay, that was at a regular meeting, nevermind.
Okay. Public participation at this point in the meeting, the Planning and zoning commission welcomes-
You gotta vote on this.
We're gonna vote.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah. It's okay.
All in favor has amended. Opposed, abstentions, two abstentions? Three abstentions? So that's four, zero, three. Okay, now, public participation. Thank you. At this point, the planning and zoning commission welcomes comments, concerns, and opinions relating to planning and zoning in Enfield. From anyone who is present, provided you may not discuss any matter of business at this time that is already elsewhere on the agenda for this evening, any matter that's part of an open public hearing of the commission, or any matter where a decision of the commission may be pending. Is there anyone who would like to address the commission under those conditions? Anyone would like to address the commission under those conditions? Last call to address the commission under those conditions. During then, we will move on to bond releases. SPR 1641, it's a bond release for a medical office building at 160 Hazard Avenue requesting the release of erosion and sediment control bond of 5,800 and a restoration bond of 149,000.
So moved.
Second.
I would, I would prefer that you quote the resolution, just refer to it.
Okay.
Because it has the, uh, just to make, make sure we're legal, it has the approval of the various departments.
Make a motion to approve the resolution of the town of Enfield Planning and Zoning Commission, SPR 1641, Huntington Chase Development LLC, 160 Hazard Avenue, map 074, lot 0118. Site improvement bond release in the amount of 149,000 and erosion control bond release in the amount of $5,800.
Second.
This is from a memo dated June 21st, uh, 2018 by the Department of Public Services. The motion's made and seconded, discussion. The only discussion is, I checked previously to make sure, as you recall, the trees had been totally eliminated, that they weren't supposed to have been, and, uh,
So the-
That bond is held for a year or for a planting season.
Right.
So that's why that's not in there.
Okay.
So all in favor? Opposed? It's unanimous. Seven, zero, zero. Excuse some of our, my going back and forth, we had a delivery of wrong things to the wrong places. Jared's trying to straighten it out. Okay, no, I'm not right there. Okay, uh, public hearing. Secretary, please take the roll and, uh, read the legal, well, this is a continuation, so take, take the roll.
Charles Durin.
Here.
Charles Ladd.
Here.
Nick LaFicus.
Here.
Virginia Higley.
Here.
Ken Nelson. Linda DeGray.
Here.
Sarah Gruber.
Here.
Guillermo Salazar.
Here.
And Richard Suzak's here.
Again, alternate Salazar is sitting in for this hearing. The applicant here, this is a public hearing, 2914 of 2 Rockland Avenue, it's a special permit for adult daycare. If you will, please come on, come on up, and I guess, uh, from what I've been told, you got a lot done.
Good night.
Name and address, please, just for the record, and the secretary gets a-
Yes, Nancy Dearborn, 2 Rockland Drive.
Steven Dalcon, 2 Rockland Drive, Enfield, wife.
Okay. Again, there were several questions that were left, and if you want to fill us in or tell us what you've been doing.
Well, um, thank you for questions and guidance from the last meeting. I have since reviewed and made some changes. Upon your approval, I will contract with, um, 24/7 Harmony Home Care in Manchester, who will provide certified aid staff and transportation to clients, which will also take care of the parking problem. I have also provided pictures of the fence, the new fence, and I'll put in an ADA bathroom and a ramp when approved.
So you should have received at your desk the revised narrative that explains, um, more in detail, sort of like the, the business plan, if you will, for this application, as well as pictures showing where the parking will take place or drop off and pick up, where the ramp will be placed once approved, and, um, where the, what the bathroom looks like now, which will be upgraded to ADA accessible. And the health department and the fire department did weigh in, so you should have received those comments at your desk. They are both okay with this application. The health department said that, um, the applicant can't prepare meals in her kitchen, per se, but I believe in the narrative, it details Meals on Wheels being the provider of the meals to the residents.
Your mic on, Jen.
Yep.
The, uh, on your desk and for the record, engineering had reviewed the subject and there's no site improvements are proposed, so there are no engineering concerns. Police department, their only comment is to remind the applicant that it's illegal to park within 20 feet, 25 feet of the intersection. And, uh, the application, as she, he says, "I believe the application states transportation will be provided, however, this should require pickup or drop off on Rockland. The plan should be provided by the applicant as to where the vehicles are conducting activities in an illegal manner." Well, we require up in the driveway. Fire department met with Mrs. Dearborn. She had AC DC interconnected smoke detection. I set up a meeting with her to check, but there was a communication error and she was not at home when I arrived. Enfield Fire Marshal's office has no concerns with the use as described in the packet provided to this office. And this was received 6/18/2018. And then it has a memo that was just quoted for the health department. And it's the Connecticut Association of Adult Daycare Incorporated. And it came from a Jan Davis from that association. No state license requirement. And I guess...
So reading through that, um, it basically says that there's got to be two doors alarmed to go in and out of the facility. Everything refers to it as a center. They have to offer meals with different menus and nutrition programs, which Meals on Wheels doesn't give you the option to pick and choose what you want to eat. And ADA compliance throughout the, um, facility is what they're saying. Outside lighting, parking lots, that's all in the outline of this Connecticut Association of Adult Day Services. But, like you said, Charlie, there is no licensing requirement. So who's responsible to follow up and make sure these guidelines are met? The fire marshal went out there already, and there's no, um, alarms on the doors or anything like that, so he's not going to check for that. Emergency lighting inside the home? I mean, every business in town has to have these, but who's going to be the one who follows up on this?
I don't know.
It's tied to, it's tied to reimbursement from DSS. If the applicant wants to receive, I'm sorry.
Well, I-
Well, it's, it's in, it's in the regulate, it's in this packet that we have.
Well, alright, I just didn't know, because he had been talking, I didn't realize he was finished.
I thought he was finished, I'm sorry.
But if she has an answer, she can-
Okay, yeah, you do.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's in, it's in here on the scope page of, so the one that says standards for adult daycare centers in Connecticut, at least, as described in the packet we were just given, these are interpretive guidelines that are met, that must be met by adult daycare centers which seek reimbursement from DSS, so-
Right, but what if they're not seeking reimbursement?
Right, well, that's, that's the thing.
But it's still a safety issue.
Oh, sure.
It's still, any commercial business of any sort, I don't care what it is, in the town of Enfield, has to have access, emergency lighting, ADA compliance. I mean, so, by this not being a licensed facility, there's no oversight. The health district already said absolutely no cooking allowed in the facility for other people. And, you know, according to this, they need to have some sort of dietary plan to give people their options for meals. And how do you meet that if you can't cook in the facility? And it's not a facility, it's a house. It's a house on the corner of Steel Road and Rockland. And parking, you know, when they're dropping off people, you know, a driveway's not a parking lot, you still got to back out in the road in the morning when all those people are trying to go to work. It, it's not a residential environment.
You know, we just got this packet anyway, I don't know if it'd make a difference if we read it, but-
Well, that, she's, Sarah's right. Sarah must have read the beginning of it, and I read the whole back of it, because I missed the first page I saw about the pain.
Yeah.
There's also a section on personnel requirements.
Yeah.
And the director, they're talking about director and staff, and there is going to be staff, and if the director's not present, they have to have somebody to back, a supervisor to back it up, full or part-time. And, and I'm just briefly reading this, so, um, there seems like there's policies and procedures that have to be met, and there's social services that need to be involved.
I did get that package from the, um, association, and I will go to DDAs, but you have to get permission from your town first, and then, after you've been in business for about three months, and then they come in, and the state comes in and comes into your home and works with you to get their ADA, um, bathrooms and everything, and they work with you to get the state funding to be, you know, state compliant, and that's how it works when you read that package, and that's how it works. But first, you have to get permission from your town.
Okay. And I don't mean to interrupt you, but, so for three months, you can be operating with no real guidelines, is that my understanding?
Yeah, when you read that package.
Okay, thank you.
And I have the package, because I put it in.
You also policies or procedures, you need a written policy.
The, um, amount of pages, and they're all important, like Ken pointed out, they're all important, and I just opened it up and it says personnel requirements and records, and it says, "The administrator who shall be responsible for operations and have a college degree, professional license, or at least two years' experience in a relevant field."
I think she has that.
Yeah.
You have that.
Okay.
She has twenty years' experience in a relevant field.
And I guess, going back to what Ken was saying, um, the way our regulations read in 4.60.1, it says that adult and day, adult and child daycare facilities must be licensed by the state. Now, if we're learning now that you don't have to be licensed unless you accept DSS reimbursement, then does that mean that we are requiring her to accept DSS reimbursement and thereby be governed by this packet so that we don't have to worry about this packet? Seems like that's-
That's a good point.
It seems like that is what this is requiring, and it seems like what the applicant is saying is that you do intend to seek DSS reimbursement, and so what the applicant is telling us is that she's going to submit to state oversight because she wants that reimbursement, and then we don't have to worry about whether these packets are being complied with or not. That's the way I, I hear this application, and is that right?
Eventually, that's what I, I will be doing.
See, eventually, and eventually, they're going to do the ADA, the state's going to help them do the ADA. What happens for three months to these frail people who have to go to the bathroom in a Star Colonial where the bathroom door is two feet wide?
No, I'm, if you give me approval, I'm not going to wait for the state to do that for me, but, you know, eventually, I have to go through them, but if you give me permission, I have to start working on that.
Yeah.
I'm not going to wait for them to do that.
And you're willing to put in exit signs and emergency lighting throughout your house and-
Yes.
Because are you also saying that, you know, until you do some of these improvements, you will not be open? So that, you know, if we do approve you, and if we set, in our conditions, we say, "You shall provide ADA accessibility," you know, and ADA, you know, bathroom things and, and, you know, again, lighting and smoke detectors and conform to the requirements of this packet, that you're not going to open until you get all that stuff, more or less, in, in position before you open, so that when you do open, everything will be in place.
Okay. If that's a requirement.
You know, because, because that seems like, you know, everybody's a little concerned that, you know, what are you going to do if this happens, or what are you going to do if that happens? But if, if we say, "We will approve you if you do all of this stuff," then, you know, it would, it would be easier and it would lessen the burden on all of us as to what you need to do in order to satisfy the state, because if you do all that, then all of a sudden, the state's going to come in, and it won't be three months that you're going to be operating under some adversarial conditions, but you might be operating, as soon as you do start opening the doors, you'll, you'll conform with these requirements.
I just had a quick question, and maybe Ken can answer this, because he has, he has a bit of knowledge on real estate. If they, they have to pull a building permit, does the state building code cover all the things you mentioned?
No, why, because what do they have to pull a building permit for?
They have to make renovations to the bathroom and everything else.
Says who? That's what, that's my concern is-
Ah, okay.
Nobody is overseeing this. Planning and zoning, when I open my businesses in Enfield, I've come to you guys, you tell me what I have to do, and I have to get a certificate of occupancy for my new business, the building department then enforces ADA compliance. The house already has a certificate of occupancy. As a residence, not a facility or a center. And, and that's where I'm saying, tomorrow, she could open the doors, and she's ready to go. I mean, this says-
Thank you.
Go ahead.
No, we've got to realize through the level of care, we're not going to be taking people that we lifting them up or doing higher care or higher lifts, or some, these are people that are coming to a day program, and we're not going to be lifting them up or anything like that, because they're, they're there for a day program.
Well, I've been to the Enfield Adult Day Center, and some of those people need some, you know, they're, they're medically fine, but they're very old and they're frail.
But when they come in the doors, I've got to assess them and see what I can handle and who I'm going to be taking at my daycare, and it's not something I can handle at my house, I'm not going to, you know.
I guess the way that I, again, interpret the regulation that says must be licensed by the state, I think it'd be a reasonable interpretation to have our zoning enforcement officer check to see if and when she achieves licensure, and if she does, then allow her to operate, but if she does not, then the regulations are not being complied with, and there could be a cease and desist. So I, I see it as, there's a requirement that it must be licensed by the state, while theoretically, you could operate for three months until you receive your licensure, maybe it's a reasonable interpretation to say that she cannot actually operate until she receives the license, licensure, and our zoning enforcement officer could be the one that enforces this. I think that's one way to read it, and to, now, whether that's feasible for our zoning enforcement officer, I don't know, Jen? Oh, part of the resolution can be, because in your regulations, it says that under, for a daycare, that they must be licensed by the state, you can add that as a whereas clause. I don't, I did the resolution, um, several weeks ago, so I don't remember if I included that or not, but you can include that as a whereas clause and then have a condition of approval that says that documentation of, um, the state approval or licensure is made part of the, um, planning office file. Then, as, they have to meet that condition of approval before they can then get, um, approval to open their daycare, which is a special permit that they need to file on the land records.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
My comment is, um, before we get to the point of licensure, which is a very valid point, and, you know, if they meet all of the requirements for ADA compliance and all that, shouldn't we discuss the, the impact it would have on the residential area to have, to have this business reside within it?
Well, that's part of it, yes, you're right.
And, because to me, that sounds like it's something where we have, you know, the biggest jurisdiction, and it's something that we should all be clear on.
That was brought up at the last meeting, uh, to, is one of the, one of the points.
Well, along with what he's saying, the police department has concerns about 25 feet to the corner.
Yeah.
Well, the driveway's on that side of the house, so the driveway's within that 25 feet.
Yeah.
But that's not parking on the street, though.
That's a parking street.
No, but the-
It's at the top of the street.
If she parks in the driveway-
Well, there's two staff that are going to use those parking spaces, so whoever's dropping off and picking up is not going to use that parking.
The drop off has to be open, period. There's no, no one else can park there, but again, like, Ken, he says, "How do, how do you keep track of that?" I'm not going to drive by every day and make sure it's open.
An ADA parking spot alone is the width of that driveway. You pull in a van, they go to unload somebody out of the van in a wheelchair, that's it. There is no parking in the driveway, other than that one vehicle that has, they have to have a designated handicap spot, and I, I've never seen one, forget about the town of Enfield, but the state of Connecticut, on a residential house. Never.
I don't think when we put that in as part of the requirements that we thought of the requirements that, like, they have in a regular parking area, we just wanted a designated spot. Maybe that's something we should consider changing too, if you're going to have any-
It also states the facility, the facility shall allow 40 square feet of activity space per person.
I read that, yep.
They fenced off the backyard because of the pool. I, I mean, it just goes, goes and goes and goes. It's not meant to be done in a rec, in a home.
I think you're right, I think that it's a great idea.
It's a phenomenal idea, but-
It's wonderful that someone is going to be caring for some of our elderly, but-
You could go lease 1,000 square feet anywhere in town, do exactly what she wants, have a lot more people-
Yep.
And none of these problems.
Yes.
That's right, because most of the places built today would have the, uh, facilities.
All ADA compliant, yeah. I mean, no cost to her, she could walk in, tell the landlord, "Boop, boop, boop," and be open in a month.
I, I just, just reading this and, and not being an expert on, on any of this, except the zoning parts, is, did the social services come down on any of this, or were they even contacted about it? I mean, they should be the experts on it, I, you know, we're, we're just reading this tonight on parts of it.
Well, I think, I think they are the experts, and that's why all we require is that someone achieve a license. All we are, in my opinion, all we say is, "Does it make sense in this area?" Because the way the special permit works is, it's recorded on the land records, and next person that gets this house can also operate in adult daycare, because we've determined that there is enough parking for someone to operate. We're not supposed to be concerned with the applicant, and that's why state licensure is part of this, in my opinion. So it's, I, I absolutely recognize the safety concerns here, but we're concerned with the land and the character of the area and the safety of people going in and out of what would, we would allow to be a business in that spot.
Well, that's what it's going to boil down to, I think, in the final phase, because the rest of it, we really don't have any control over, yes.
Just another thing is, there's an additional flow of traffic with Meals on Wheels coming in, so where do they park when they're delivering X number of meals? They can't park on the street, and if there's cars in the driveway or a van that's in the driveway, where do they get to park? That's, that's another parking space that needs to be available.
That was going to be my question, because it doesn't say Meals on Wheels is definitely going to do it, it says may do it. So if not, then she's, then we go back to, you can't do any cooking in the house.
Well, I don't know, the, the, do they do?
I don't think they do that, but-
Do they do that type of deliver, I mean, to, to that type of an establishment?
Well, I spoke to the lady, um, she told me I might have to come pick up the meals, and I don't really know how it works, but I have spoke to her, and she told me what the deposit was, and I might have to, um-
Did you tell her how many clients she would be having?
Yes.
Okay.
I guess in terms of parking, in the picture we got tonight, you see, like, the house and the mailbox. Obviously, you have spot where the, I'm looking at this picture.
Yes.
So where you, where you've written business parking area, obviously, that's got to be open, that space is going to be open, but what, is there a space to the left of the mailbox there where someone could park?
Yes.
And is that 25, within 25 feet of the intersection?
Yes.
In, in front, like, to the left of the mailbox is within 25 feet?
The left of the mailbox.
From the street.
From the intersection.
From the intersection, it's 25 feet.
Oh, it is, so nobody can park there.
They're the corner house.
Oh.
Corner house.
Also, Sarah, the, the area marked as business parking?
Yeah.
That's actually going to be used by two staff members.
No, I know, yeah, that's in their garage, I'm looking at literally where the words are.
Two driveway.
Yeah, they're-
From the left side.
From the left side.
So, right in front of the house?
No.
That's not what-
That's not where we're going to be parking.
I know, that's not where you're going to be parking, but is that a spot, is that spot right here, is that within 25 feet of an intersection?
Because Sarah, there, there is a site plan that we did receive, and there is a side yard requirement of 32 feet to the edge of the house, so it realistically, you know, I, I think that, and there's a radius, obviously, because it is a corner, so, you know, the, the frontage, the straightaway frontage in, that, of the property that they own is 71 feet, so-
I think there is a spot there, yeah.
Realistically, there might be one spot, you know, at the furthest part of, right in front of their property, that would, you know, satisfy the 25 feet, you know, condition, but that would be the only spot, you know, based upon, just looking at the site plan, and being totally in front of their property, so that, they do have room for one car to be, you know, on, in front of their property, that would be on the street and still 25 feet away from, you know, the corner.
That sounds right.
I, I thought you couldn't run a business unless you had off-street parking in a neighborhood.
Yeah.
So if they have 10 employees, they can park 10 cars down the street in front of the neighbor's house and everything?
No.
No.
We, we limit the number of employees you can have in a, in a residential...
You know, they're talking about parking within the garage. Well, their two cars, where are they parking if the employees are parking in the garage?
I don't know, there's more problems every time we seem to talk.
I thought that that was, the garage would be where their two vehicles were, but then again, they also have a daughter.
Mm-hmm.
Does she have her own car?
She has her own car, so...
So you have three cars?
Yes.
Okay.
It'll be the two cars in the garage and hers outside.
And then we have two driveway parking. One is designated for the...
Business.
The business and the other one is designated for the employee.
Right, that, we understand that, but the problem is you need an ADA space, which requires two parking spaces. So when the van pulls in the driveway to offload somebody who's in a wheelchair, that you have to have that extra space. Every business in town has to have one to open and you're in this business, so you definitely have to have one. You're putting a wheelchair ramp on the front of the house, so you're expecting that client who may end up in a wheelchair or whatever. So the two spaces in your driveway in front of the garage are taken just for that van. So even if the van's not there, nobody can park there. It's a handicap spot.
But that's the left-hand side and there will be that transportation service dropping and picking up the clients. First I contracted, if this happens, with that home care agency to pick up and drop off the clients.
Right, they're going to pull in your driveway.
Yeah.
Unload the clients in the driveway.
Yeah.
So there's your two spots.
But then, but she drops them off and leaves, so...
Right, but that'd be like somebody parking in a handicap spot without a sticker. I mean, if you do that at Target, you're going to get a ticket. I mean, that is reserved.
That has to stay.
Suppose somebody comes over to visit one of your clients and they're handicapped, they're allowed to use that space, not, not your daughter or you, even the owner.
Yeah, you can't use it either.
I mean, it's designated, every single store, business restaurant in the country has to have so many spots designated. I'm just assuming you're going to, one will be sufficient for you.
Yeah, but we intend during business hours, nobody's going to be parking in that spot.
Right, that's what we're saying, nobody parks there.
Period, all the time.
But where's your daughter going to park?
No, on the, that's the left-hand side, right? So my daughter is going to park on the right-hand side. Does that make sense?
The one space is going to take the width to...
I even made this...
We have two...
I even made this ticket to put it on the left-hand side of the...
Right, I understand that. The left-hand side, you also need the right-hand side with it to get a handicapped, accessible spot. So you need both left and right side for one spot because when the van pulls in and drops down the wheelchair ramp, it goes into that other bay. A car can't be parked there. So when you go to, when you leave here, go to a restaurant, you'll see a handicap spot and then another spot next to it with white lines through it. That's for the wheelchair ramp to go down to allow the people to get on and off. And that's, I think that's what we're misunderstanding is you're losing both spots to do that.
Have you done, because I know it's going to, it costs you a lot to renovate all the requirements, have you looked into the possibility of renting some small place where you could use this? As was said, you might get away a lot cheaper than doing all the renovating that you're doing. And we do need that type of service in town, there's no doubt about it, but...
It's a great idea. It's an absolute great idea.
There's so many problems that really you could solve if there was a decent rental that you could find. And I don't know if you've done any looking around or checking anywhere with a real estate dealer or somebody, I don't know, the specialists in that?
No, I mean, like right here at the whole Donut Plaza, they've got a 1,000 square foot place that the owner is responsible to make the bathroom handicapped accessible. That saves her $15,000. Because if you look at the picture of her bathroom, count the tiles, it's only four feet wide.
Yeah, right, I know that.
For an ADA bathroom, you have to have five foot clear, not counting the toilet or the vanity, to get in and out. They're going to have to take a foot out of their kitchen or the other room just to make that bathroom compliant. I, I mean, you're talking 15, $20,000 to make that one bathroom.
And you got the special wiring of the lights.
The emergency light, all of it.
Emergency lighting. I don't know.
I'm, I'm okay, ready to vote, but I don't want, if this passes, I don't want them to have a false hope and then find out they're at $50,000 in renovations to this house to make it what it is. I mean, have you ever seen a residential home with emergency lighting in it or exit signs at your front door? Because that's what this says this has to have. And then wheelchair ramps, we make exceptions.
Alarms on the door if they're opened.
We make exception for wheelchair ramp for disabled people. In this situation, we're creating the situation to do this. You know, as soon as that person leaves the home, we make them take the ramp down.
I mean, the idea is a wonderful idea and it is needed.
The financials of the, of making these changes to the house is, it's really up to the owner of the home if they want to pay that or not. And it seems like she's going to be seeking reimbursement for that. And, I mean, the regulations aren't, they're not saying that they need, that you guys need to enforce all of these things like the lights and whatnot. But if you do say, I mean, the regulations do require a license. So if you put in the conditions of approval that she has to give us the documentation that she has a license from the state, you have what, in your packets, what they need to look at and what, what they're going to be looking at to approve her for this. So I would just keep that in mind when making your decision.
I understand and that's why I said I'm ready to vote, but I don't want, if, if it passes tonight, it's not, okay, she's good to go. They're in for some serious expenses to meet the licensing requirement and, and it's, in a sense, I understand it's for safety, but what she's trying to do is for the good of the people and there's so many stipulations on it that to do it in a residential home is just...
Even the picking up and dropping off of food and the people.
Absolutely.
It's, it's another problem is being created at a corner which the police department...
Right. So the improvements have no bearing on us at all. If it says license and we make that a stipulation, they're going to make sure those improvements are done.
Right.
But all I wanted to suggest is if they hadn't looked into...
Right, you're right.
A facility, it might be a much better and quicker deal. Yeah, I do, yeah, oh, yeah. I don't know. Well, let me open up the public. Is anyone in the public list to speak in favor or against this application? Anyone in the public would like to speak in favor or against this application? Anyone in the public would like to speak in favor or against the application? You people ready to close it? Then, okay, then I'll...
What? Unless she's got something else she wants to try or...
Yeah, unless you, unless you, if you have anything to say before I close it. Okay.
What we would like to say, if we, you can allow us to, with the permit, to start with it for that three months, that will allow us to know what to improve, where to improve on.
The state will tell you that.
Well, I'll tell you if you, you asking for, you're asking for what? An extension of time or you want to...
I think what he's saying is, is that, you know, according to this, this document that we received here today is that, you know, basically they can operate for three months prior to their requirement of being licensed by the state. But I think one of the stipulations that I would feel comfortable with is that, you know, they, they get licensed by the state before they open their facility.
Absolutely.
So that, you know, there, there's no misinterpretation as to, you know, whether, you know, they're meeting the requirements or the intent of the requirements that, you know, are stipulated in, in this, you know, document that we received today. So, you know, I, I think that in, in that vein, you know, we're, you know, we're sort of saying that we would like to have everything in place. We'll give you the, if, if we give you the approval and, and, you know, that it would be up to you before you open to make everything, you know, in, in conformance with the requirements that are going to have to be in place within a three-month period. So, so it's one of those kind of things where, you know, although the document says that there's a three-month grace period, we're saying that our preference is that you conform to all those requirements prior to opening. So, and, and that's just my opinion and we still have to sort of, you know, if, if we're going to make that a condition, we still have to discuss it. But, you know, it's, you know, I think that I would be in favor of it if that was a part of the conditions in terms of, you know, I don't want to say you can't do it in your house, but, you know, what they might find is exactly what, what Mr. Nelson is saying is, is that, you know, when, when they start looking at all these requirements that they have to do and the expenditures that they would have to make, that maybe it would make some sense to actually look somewhere else or try to do it, you know, rather than do it at your home because it, it would be so expensive. And, and after three months, you know, are, you know, I, I'm not sure that you're going to be that committed and then all of a sudden, you know, you might be giving people false hope that they have someplace to go and then all of a sudden, there's no place for them to go anymore. So, so in that sense, you know, if you start, if you commit yourself, this, this would mean that, you know, you're definitely going to commit yourself prior to opening your, your facility. And, and that's really what, what I would like to see is that the commitment is there, not necessarily, let's see what happens and, you know, if we can make a go of it, then, you know, we're going to go with that.
I just have one question. And this three-month period, it's my understanding that the state wants you to be running the facility for three months prior to them coming to actually do the licensuring. So what you're asking, Rich, can't happen. They have to run for three months. The state then comes out, looks at it and says, oh, yes, we can give you a license or no, we can't. They have to make all the investments prior to and get in compliance first, even though there's still, they have to be running. It has to be up and running.
Okay, so maybe we're saying the same thing, only that the fact that, you know, all the improvements have to be made prior to them opening the facility for public use.
Yeah, and you've got to have like one or two clients and it has to be running and the clients don't have to be attending every day, but they want to see that you run and have at least one or two clients in...
But I don't think we're saying the same...
That's what the state requires.
No, but I don't think we are saying the same thing that, that you believe the state is saying.
That's what's in that book, that handbook.
Yeah, but, but what, I'm sorry, I don't want to speak for you, Rich, but I believe what, what he's saying is that if, if we consider this, if this were to be considered, we would require that you make all of those changes, improvements, enhancements that are listed here before you actually start operating. Not before you get the license, before you start operating. The state says you need to start operating and then they'll come in and give you a license. We're saying before you can open the doors, you would have to make all of the improvements.
Coming back to, a little bit to zoning, number one, you have the police department that doesn't want you within 25 feet of parking of, of the corner. Secondly, you're increasing the traffic on that corner, whether they park there or not by the, the people coming and going and also the delivering of food. And the last question of all, I think, you mentioned that, was, does it belong in the neighborhood and once you're going to zone this for this, it's forever?
Well, I think Sarah covered the licensing. I mean, it says child and adult facilities licensed in the state.
And I think it's no, it's no different than if you find out that someone's been operating a daycare center and then you determine that they have been licensed, they get a cease and desist. I mean, it's harder, it's obviously hard to detect, but it's something that, that our regulations provide for. And if the licensure, licensure process is how the applicant describes it is, then you can also presume the applicant's going to want to do those improvements before she even tries to have the state come in because then she's just going to get denied anyway. Maybe.
But I, I think maybe you're misunderstanding, there is no license for an adult day facility. It doesn't exist. And that's what this is. This says, this is just their guidelines to be part of this group. It's not a license. So there is no license to allow that facility to meet our zoning regulations in a residential neighborhood.
I think I agree. I think, I think that maybe one definition or interpretation of license is...
I wish you'd, all right.
Receiving approval from the state for this. And that would tie you to the requirements of that.
Mr. Houseman?
All right, I have to open this to the public again unless you want to keep going.
No, I'm all set.
Anyone in the public would like to speak in favor or against, again, this application? Anyone, again, who would like to speak in favor or against the application? Anyone would like to speak in favor against the application? Then I'll close public hearing 2914.
Are we entertaining motions?
I can't do one, but that's, it's dead air right now. It's whatever the commission wishes.
We got a motion in here?
I believe there is. I think there are, I think you'll find two. There are two, two of them. They're both dated June 21st. Yeah, we, we, that's the negative, that one's the negative.
So in the resolution, you received two. One of them has all the conditions if you were to approve.
That's right, I just said that he has it.
Okay. So we included site-specific conditions, including approval from the fire marshal and the health department must be provided to the planning office. We already got those comments, so I guess you don't really need that condition. And then we have a couple others, including the licensure from the state being made part of the planning file, no parking within 25 feet of the intersection and the cars cannot queue onto the street while waiting for pickup or drop off. So if you would want to add any more or take any away, those are, the rest of them are pretty standard conditions of approval.
No, it's not it.
Anyone? You don't have to wait for him, I...
I, I mean, again, I, I'm going to make a motion that we approve, you know, the draft resolution to approve public hearing 2914 to Rockland Drive, you know, as dated June 21st, as prepared by the planning department with the conditions listed. And I think that, you know, what we're going to do is emphasize the fact that, you know, the facility, the, prior to opening its doors, has to meet the requirements for ADA accessibility and conform with, you know, the recommendations of the, the police department for parking requirements and also meet the ADA parking requirements. So that, you know, basically we, we have all the, you know, requirements associated with, you know, a, a more or less, you know, frail and people who need additional help in, in place prior to opening the doors for, you know, your use.
Second.
Motion's made in the second, so, so that you understand, which is basically saying is that they would, before they operate, have to have everything done and then operate three months before the state comes in.
Correct.
So that would be a period of time.
Right, and, and that puts all the, the requirements on them to, to make sure all those improvements prior to opening. to make all those improvements prior to opening. So, if, and if they find out that it's not worth it, then, you know, that would be a decision they would make. And, but, you know, again, recognizing that this kind of facility is necessary.
Okay, that's fine. Any further discussion? All in favor? Three opposed? One, two, three, four. Motion is lost, denied.
The motion fails, so.
Yeah, the motion failed.
Wants to make this motion.
It's already made.
It's already made.
All right, all right, okay, all right. We don't have to, okay, fine.
You don't need to make two motions.
I would suggest you still might want to look into a rental somewhere of a commercial, commercial area where this would be done by the owner. It actually would be much safer for you, for your clients even.
Also for you.
And for you, right.
It's a great business model. I mean, absolutely. If you find the right location, you're going to be very, very successful at this. I just can't see it in a residential neighborhood, though.
No, it doesn't belong there. Okay, thank you very much. Let me get my, I lost it. Public hearing 2915, 137 Elm Street, special permit application. Secretary, please take the roll and read the legal notice.
Charles Durin.
Here.
Charles Ladd.
Here.
Nick LaFicus.
Here.
Virginia Higley.
Here.
Ken Nelson.
Here.
Linda DeGray.
Here.
Sarah Gruber.
Here.
Guillermo Salazar.
Here.
And Richard Suzak is here. Did we open this hearing?
No. Oh, yes, we opened it.
Yeah, so, yeah.
It had been legally published.
Correct, so we don't have it.
Don't have to open it.
Correct.
Couple comments beforehand. Is the applicant here, by the way, or a representative?
I do not see the applicant. They were notified of the meeting tonight, but I do not believe I see the applicant in the audience.
Well, I talked to you, I have a couple complaints in the first place. I don't mind the graph paper, but there's no signature on who was responsible for it. There's no North Arrow. There, I know that they tried to do the measurements right, but then when you come down to the doorway, the doorway is nowhere near what he says the graph is. I mean, he's not a, well, let's say, a person that draws the graph. But it's also, there's nothing on the driveway width and that's where they want to park. Secondly, on his map, he has, if you're coming in off of Elm Street, he has the slopes of the driveway run. They're sloping like it is if you're coming in from the back room, the backyard.
Actually, that's where the driveway is, in the backyard.
Well, no, he comes in off of Elm Street. He's not going to park this way.
No, he comes in off the street behind him. Same as the, the same as the State Farm agent does. All those houses have driveways on the back street.
Well, he's got no opening in the back. I couldn't tell that from the drawing.
There's 137 here.
Yeah, I know.
Because then here, the driveways are all going from the back. They don't come out.
I'm sorry, I was looking by this.
So, everything comes off of that street in the back.
Well, that's nice news. Thank you very much. I had needed this.
Oh, you couldn't have him coming off Elm Street there.
I needed interpretation.
Unless you really want to get run over.
Yeah, all right, then. Because that's the only street he put in, is Elm Street.
I suggest we just continue this and if he wants to have the approval, he comes in next time.
Well, this is the second time.
I think Charlie's right. You really should show the other road.
Yeah.
I mean, that's critical.
Yeah, you should, but you should be, you know.
I mean, he's got...
Call him and tell him he's got to fix his print and...
There's another part two that he's...
If he doesn't want to be extended, we're done.
There's another part two which I object to is he has no knowledge of what use to put it to. And that really, on Elm Street, is a big problem because you've got to know what you're putting in there.
So, to my knowledge, from conversations with the applicant, right now, it's a residential zone approved for only residential use. He's having trouble finding anyone to rent or even sell to who wants to live there. It's between another residential house and a business. He wants to be able to rent to businesses, but under the current regulations, he can't do that. So, he wanted to apply to allow a limited office over here, which is why this application is before you. I let him know that you might not be completely open to approving something without knowing exactly what the office use would be because of the impact it might have on the surrounding neighborhoods, which are both, it is, there is commercial near there, but there's also a significant amount of residential. So, I have relayed that message. I can relay that you would like more information on...
Has, would you?
Police want to know that, too.
Would you, or could you suggest, or dare suggest to him that he might want to contact some real estate dealer in town who might be able to steer him or help him out in his search for...
Tenants.
Tenants or, or...
Buyers.
A buyer? I don't know if he has, if he's done that.
You also have people who are on Elm Street that think their property's worth $10 million.
Well, then.
Well.
You know, and you're not going to get that.
I know people that like to live on Elm Street. They like the traffic and the noise.
Wasn't this a dentist's office?
It's next door.
Oh, next door.
That's the one that's next door.
That's next door.
State Farm is right on the corner when you turn in.
Right.
And all the driveways on that side of the street go in that same street that...
The back Carroll.
That they go in the backyard.
Yeah, it's Carroll Street.
Yeah, Carroll Street.
In fact, I don't think at the time that the...
With all the limited offices there, we knew what they were before they were approved.
The insurance person had been on the front because the garage was on the front. And we told her she had, which she made it into an office and goes it through the back.
She did a beautiful job.
Yeah, she did. So, we had her do that for that reason.
Knowing who it was, it was a given she was going to do a good job.
Yeah.
But anyway, so, I don't know if you can do that, if they want to, if you people want to continue it.
Does he need an extension?
I'm sorry, does he need an extension?
No, the mandatory closed public hearing date is July 12th, which is at your next meeting. I mean, if you're uncomfortable with continuing it in case...
Well, you know, he's supposedly, he's down in Florida, right?
From conversations with him, yes, he does live in Florida.
So, if he's not up here, what did he expect not coming here?
He's been in the office, so I don't know when he's... He does have real estate, obviously, and I believe business up here. So, I don't really know what his, when he's in Connecticut versus Florida.
Why I'm asking, if he even has a representative around could come in. He doesn't himself need to be there, but he does need to give us a signed affidavit that he has...
A real estate and a good person.
Right, we shouldn't be second guessing, answering our own questions.
Yeah, I know.
I mean, what if Charlie's wrong and he wants to come in off of Elm Street?
Well, he can't.
We don't know that for sure.
Yeah, well, we won't let him, so.
Oh, yeah, I know. Okay.
I think the police get excited about him coming in from that side. Tell them you want to cut a driveway.
Yes, all right.
So, we received the comments from the police department this afternoon, so I have to reach out to the applicant based on those two. So, I'll talk to him about the site plan and what your questions are and whether he'll be able to attend the next meeting. But it's up to you if you want to continue it.
Well, yeah, I know, that's up, I'm sorry. Oh, I have to, yeah, oh, yeah.
I don't think we should spend too much more time on it.
Is there anyone in public who would like to speak in favor against this application? Anyone in the public would like to speak in favor against the application? Last call to speak in favor against the application. Chair, entertain a motion on whatever you want to do.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we continue public hearing 2915, 137 Elm Street, to our next meeting on July...
12th.
12.
Second.
Okay, motion's made in the second, and all in favor. Any opposed? It's unanimous. Explain to the gentlemen that it's the last meeting and we'll have to have a decision.
Yep, I will.
Okay. New business, public hearing 2909, zoning text change. Secretary, please take the roll and again, read the legal notice.
Charles Durin.
Here.
Charles Ladd.
Here.
Nick LaFicus.
Here.
Virginia Higley.
Here.
Ken Nelson.
Here.
Linda DeGray.
Here.
Sarah Gruber.
Here.
Guillermo Salazar.
Here.
And Richard Suzak is here.
Over to Salazar, I'll be sitting in for the absent commissioner. Yeah, I know, he's going to...
The Enfield Planning and Zoning Commission will hold public hearings on Thursday, June 21st, 2018, at 7:00 PM in the Town Hall Council Chambers, 820 Enfield Street, Enfield, Connecticut, concerning the following application. Public hearing 2909, zoning text change, application for a new regulation, section 4.90, large flexible residential housing. Paul W. Smith, applicant.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Evening, Mr. Chairman.
Please introduce yourselves.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. For the record, Attorney Paul Smith, 27 South Main Street, Windsor Locks, Connecticut. I represent Enfield Properties LLC. To my right is Frank Tryano, who is the Principal of Enfield Properties. And to my left is Dave Ziyex, an engineer with F.A. Hesketh and Associates from East Granby, was involved in this text, working with us on this text change. If I might proceed.
Oh, yes, good.
I just didn't know if there was any housekeeping prior to that. Sorry. By way of history, we were before this commission in December of 2017 to discuss a similar text change application. That application was withdrawn after some discussion with the commission. And we went back to work with staff in terms of refining the text. We then, if you might recall, had a meeting with the commission, an informal, on March 15th, 2018, where we discussed a sort of a second draft of this text resolution. Took those comments back and then, again, worked with staff to try to address as best we could those comments. And then in May of this year, we submitted the application with the final draft of the text, which is, brings us to this hearing tonight. I'm not going to sort of do a prolonged sort of presentation of why, but I think for the record, I should sort of reiterate the reasons and the rationale that was initially expressed back in the December meeting and has been discussed with the commission. Obviously, the text change allows for residential multifamily units under a narrow set of circumstances on certain properties in town. There are two functions here. One is that the applicant believes, and the genesis of this is that there is a need for multifamily development, rational multifamily development in the town of Enfield, that the town would be well-served by that sort of development. If you look at the existing housing stock of multifamily in town, there's been only one complex developed since 1992, so that's 25 years in that complex, which is Mayfield. I know you're all familiar with that. Is really more of a high-end sort of condo rental-style unit with individual entrances and exits each unit, garages, that sort of thing attached to each unit. So, what we're really pointing towards here is a market rate, reasonable market rate, multifamily residential units. But again, we're sort of trying to restrict it, so it's, it can't sort of just crop up in all different types of places in town. And with regard to the need, any of the reports, and again, we've discussed these, but there's a report out of Simsbury, which did a study in 2014 statewide with almost, close to 40 to 50% of the renters being younger people, millennials, 25 to 30% of the renters being 55 and over, so that there's a broad spectrum of people that utilize these units that are not in a sort of family mode, the child-rearing sort of dynamic. And so, the idea is to attract and maintain in Enfield, like other towns are doing, a young population and your older population. And this type of sort of multifamily use, multifamily development, you see ongoing in all different types of town. It's an important mix to the housing stock that any active and vital community has. There are always three things that concern people when you discuss multifamily housing. One is traffic. Two is the increased strain on municipal services, especially with regard to school, crime, those sort of things. But if you, again, look at the studies, again, referring to the one out of Simsbury, and I could give the commission copies if they wanted, there was one out of Harvard University in 2007, they all indicate actually that these kind of multifamily units generate less housing trips than single-family homes. They tend to be located, as we would propose, near commercial areas so that, again, the trip generation in terms of length and time is much less. With regard to education, again, these kind of units are really marketed and designed for the young and the elderly, so it shouldn't be any surprise that it has. These type of units generally have very little impact on school systems. You would find, if you looked at statistics with regard to crime, these type of market rate units virtually have no uptick in terms of crime or issues. And even the existing housing stock of this type of multifamily development in town is not a concern in terms of incidents or crime or anything like that. So, the end result for the town with this type of development is you sort of maintain a good housing mix, which is actually something that you've considered in your plan of conservation and development. You tend to have a very low impact on your services and therefore, your expenses. So, economically, it's a positive generator, not a negative generator for the town. And again, looking at the age of your multifamily stock and the sort of lack of really any meaningful development over the last 25 years, I think it's something the town would well do to take advantage of, as many of the other municipalities are. And finally, with regard to that, there have been regional studies that indicate that there's a need for up to 4,000 of these type of units within this area, the sort of north-central Connecticut area. And so, it's something I think the town should seriously consider and at the same time, I think it can be done in a way which enhances the quality of life in town and is a positive, not only for the people that move there and live there, but for all the residents of the town. Having said that, I'm going to turn to the actual text that we have proposed. And let me say, at the outset, we appreciate the time that the staff has spent working with us on the proposals, looking at comments from the commission, taking in their comments and trying to redraft something that addresses many, and perhaps not all, but many of the concerns that the commissioners had in terms of discussions and that staff frankly had. Briefly, again, going over the text itself, it's obviously designed for a transitional zone because it's required to be located in a residential area that abuts basically an industrial-commercial area. an industrial-commercial area. The minimum ownership of a parcel required is 25 acres, of which at least 15 acres has to be in a residential zone. It can apply to all residential zones except an R-88, so what we've basically done is eliminated it from sort of any rural areas. It has to be connected to public water, public sewer, and if there is gas service available, that also has to be used for the units. And again, so what that does is, in terms of a limiting factor, there are areas in town, obviously, that if you don't have those services, you can't, you can't even apply for the units. The development also has to be located on a collector street, collector road, which means what we're trying to address there is the concern that, you know, these type of units, these type of, this type of density would basically develop some traffic issues, and by locating on a collector road, much of that is addressed. Any applicant would have to demonstrate to the satisfaction of commission through a traffic report, that there's adequate sightlines, capacity, level of service for both vehicular and pedestrian traffic, and convince the commission that there's no adverse impact on any of those.
Could I make a comment?
Yes.
On that one section? And I don't know, I had talked to Roger at the time, and suggested you might want to consider a distance set from I-91, seeing as that was the general area in which the site is located, and would keep it down in this area, since we're doing a TOD with the development in downtown Thompsonville.
Sure.
Takes this side of 91. This would be on the other side of 91, within a certain distance, but it would also keep it out of Hazardville and Skidaco, where I think previously the commission has sort of wanted to keep that type of development away from that area.
Okay.
In fact, I think the last one was the largest concern from the individual that put in the paperwork was for that general area, because this would allow, what's the route number, 83?
190?
Well, yeah, it keeps on the way, all the way Hazard Avenue, it would be all the way out.
190.
That's 190, but then the road into Broadbrook.
Oh, that's 191.
191. And you got Taylor Road, so you have all these other areas that could be developed under this regulation, because I believe the sewer lines are out there in the water. So that was my suggestion to him, I don't know if that got passed through.
Yeah, I'm just trying to understand it for clarification. You're saying it had to, would have to be a certain distance from-
I-91 corridor, in other words, keep it within the I-91 corridor.
Oh, keep it within the I-91 corridor.
Yeah.
Okay.
Which would be north and south that it runs, because then it would keep it down here in the more of the commercial area, anyway.
Yeah, I mean, we, to a certain degree, Mr. Chairman, tried to do that with the R-88, but I certainly would take a look at that, it's probably feasible to do. You would just define it, I guess, on either side of 91, you know.
Right, either side of 91, right.
Right, and so you'd just figure out-
In fact, that's where all the other large apartments are.
Yeah, and so you figure out sort of, you know, what's a responsible distance, right?
Right.
It's not, you know, it's not, obviously not three miles, it's, you know, something, but I don't know what it is.
But I think it would answer the question.
One mile.
It would answer the questions that were raised last time, where they were gonna go all over.
Yeah, I mean, something like, a distance like a mile or something, I think, could work. I mean, I-
Right.
I'd like to, we'd like to have Dave plot it, obviously, so we know what, you know, we're not creating something that's, you know, a monster, but, you know, or that you didn't intend, yeah.
It's basically what we did way back when Jose was here, too.
Yeah.
We, it was a distance type of thing that we used.
That's fine.
It was on a project.
I made a note of that with regard to three, C3, so.
Because we have several collector roads in town.
Right.
And it would meet this qualification, that's all.
Yeah, no.
That's true.
There's, you know, by our, you know, we sort of had, we've sort of, Dave and I have both sort of reviewed land within the town, vacant land, to see where it might fit. At this point, we think, you know, there's maybe a handful, I think is probably a fair statement, of pieces, but we have no problem looking at that sort of distance set from the I-91 corridor as the, where it would go, the zone or something that it would go into, you know?
Right.
So that's certainly a consideration.
Okay, thank you.
No problem. Continuing with under C, we also, as the commission requested, would include landscape walking trails and pedestrian areas with benches or gardens, community gardens to be included. Then we basically have a list of appropriate things that might go in the development, but we didn't specify a number, or, you know, other than to set them forth, it would basically be on a case-by-case basis. We took that from your-
Was it four?
Existing regulation in 4.70, I think it's six, which is the 60-acre apartment, I call it apartment sort of condominium zone that you have, and so we took those out, I mean, we took them and put them in here, at the same time we eliminated on-storage, onsite storage facility and made that actually a mandatory requirement.
I have another suggestion on item six, because you have it all. On Mayfield, when we set that up, and I don't, I forget the wording, we did give a list such as this, but we said, "Take so many from this list."
Pick four is what you had in Mayfield.
Pick four, right, well, that's what-
Four.
Or more.
Right, or more.
Well, but let's say a minimum of four.
Yeah.
So if, I would suggest that maybe you put that in there, so that it's a minimum of four, and then they know what they have to get into.
We would recommend to take that out, we want to put that in.
Yeah, I mean, again, when we talked to staff, we initially had it in, and so the discussion was to take it out, but, I mean, whatever sort of really works, I think, is fine, we don't-
Well, it's in one place and the thing, and when I put it in the other, that's-
We're fine with that, we agree. We agree. Plus, you'd pick up a lot of property putting all of these in.
Right.
Exactly.
And it saves some time, too, you wouldn't have a fight over, well, what are you gonna do?
Right. Yeah, I understood, Mr. Chairman.
I'm doing another question.
I'm sorry.
Could I ask, when you're talking about onsite storage, that can mean two things. One can be storage space for the residents, and the other can be storage space for lawn equipment, snow removal equipment, and so on.
Yeah, what we did, if you look at 11, is we said, "All units shall be provided with onsite storage," so that pretty much-
So that would be the individuals who live there.
The unit, yeah. You have to provide the unit, yeah.
What about for use by the complex management?
That would be part of the application for a site plan, which we would still have to come back for.
Yeah, listen, normally, there's very little of that, usually you hire outside services to do the plowing, the lawn maintenance, it's just more economical to do that.
Well, it depends how far you want to go.
Yeah.
Well, there are, elsewhere in the regulations, the required submission of a management plan, which is in this.
Right, yeah.
But there's also additions to what is currently in this draft of the proposed text change, that would require that any changes to the management plan be provided, and potentially you'd have to come before the commission again, including how do you plan to address trash, wastewater treatment, storage.
Management of the grounds, right.
And so it's one of those things where, at least, when I was reading this, I thought, okay, I like the idea of a management plan, and I think it addresses that to say, if there's gonna be a change to it, that there'd have to be, I know a site plan approval is required, but maybe to come again.
Yeah, if you were gonna significantly modify the plan, for example, the plans that I have seen, that when you do a management plan, is usually what they say is, an outside service would provide snowplow removal, an outside service would be required, so you know that those things, you know, it's gonna be, someone's gonna be hired to mow the lawn. I mean, that's generally what happens. Very rarely, Dave, do I think we see anybody that sort of does it, you know what I mean? Usually, some of the big complexes have a guy on site, but he's not really designed to do that stuff.
I'd be happy to see that anywhere, yeah.
I think Mayfield has it, right?
They do, Mayfield does.
Mayfield has it.
Mayfield does.
And I think recently, we expanded it.
They have another expansion, so they could park their trucks and so forth.
Yeah, and again, I, you know, if we were to change, you're right, we would probably have to come back and say, we're, you know, allocating an area, because you're talking about parking vehicles now, permanently parking them, or storage of whatever, right? And a structure, I'd assume, if you got mowers and stuff.
Okay. The only thing, when you put onsite storage-
I mean, we're not proposing, we're proposing in 11, all units shall be for onsite storage, yeah, for units.
Well, is there a way?
Storage unit.
Yeah, but where? Within the building within which they reside, or out in the backwoods?
I can tell you what our, our plan is, is the upper floor is gonna be designed for storage, and it's gonna be accessible-
That's the way it was before, I agree with that, but-
It's gonna be accessible by elevator.
It's not what this says.
Right.
For clarification for the text language.
I mean-
What does onsite storage mean?
Within the residential, within the residential building.
If you want us to put that, that's fine.
I would like that, absolutely, because we had an application several years ago that had the storage was way else, yeah.
I was wondering if you would say complex or building, that's all.
Well, you might say that within the residential buildings.
Yes.
Yeah.
Right, I mean, you're not anticipating, and again, someone may come to you and say, you know, we want to-
Where the resident resides.
Right. Residential buildings would, I think, probably be the most sensible.
Well, if you had more than two, if you had more than one building.
Right.
You could put it in the other building. I'd rather have it in the building the resident resides.
Okay.
Yes, Ken?
So if we approve this-
I might say, I'm sorry, within which the unit is located would be the better way to say.
It's fine, you're the attorney.
I'm not trying, I'm just, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So if we approve this, do they have to come back to planning and zoning to move forward with a particular project?
Yes, yes, yes.
Because like I said before, I think this is a great thing in the right area, or it could be a great thing in the wrong area if laid out properly. But like we just saw, down the road with the old Hallmark building, that was very poor planning, and I just want to make sure that this has to get stamped by this commission, whoever's sitting here, before anything moves forward. That's why I'm leery about making a text change in this-
Well, that's why I'm limiting it within the 91 corridor.
Yeah.
Which is in, within this area, which is a really commercial residential, well, large residential area.
Right, I understand that, but even still, if you put it right next to a, you know, a bus company, or something, a three-shift manufacturing facility that runs all night long.
Well, yeah.
You know, you're gonna have people fighting with each other constantly, and-
Well, I don't think the person would probably build something this size.
Manning Road, perfect example.
Well, yeah, but, I mean, building an apartment now, I mean, taking and building the apartment unit, not a factor.
No, I understand that, but if you build it, and the apartments are right next to an existing manufacturing facility, you know, like, they have a lot of nice features that if it's laid out right, like the recreation facility.
Right.
You know, use that as a buffer, and, you know, I would want to see how this is laid out to separate the noise from industrial or commercial to the residential units, whether it's the outdoor pool, tennis courts, and recreation, just to get the distance, because let's face it, I mean, I know they're gonna put something in quality in this town, but not everybody's going to. They're gonna cram in as much as they can, and I forget those amenities for the complex.
Well, that's what I wanted, limited where it could go.
Well, why not create an overlay district?
Well, you don't, you don't-
You know, we had talked-
Because just size is gonna limit this.
Right, we had talked about that, the preference seemed to be-
Well, that's, right.
A special use permit.
That's what I, if it was-
And sort of limiting the scope of where it can go.
Let's, you're talking, please, would you raise your hand, so I can keep it down on wire and leather?
Let me just address Commissioners Nelson's point very briefly, because I think it is a good point. This is a special use permit change, so anyone, including us, there's nothing at this point but a text change that goes into your regulations. Now, if my client wants to bring his South Road piece in, he can do that. It reasonably qualifies, because it's over 25 acres, it has, you know, it's on a proper corridor road, it, you know, it has a transition, on one side, we have residential houses, on the other, and if you extend out residential-commercial, and then sort of, you know, Bosco's and that's use over there, more than 1,000 feet, but still, I get your concern. So then it's, how do we, how do we address that, right? And if we sort of were to flip it, and you were to say, well, you're putting, you know, these residences, you know what I'm saying, right near this, is that, is that really gonna work, okay? So there's a lot of ways we can show it. Now, we don't think that's gonna have an impact to our proposal, but I get what you're saying. Down the road, somebody else may say, "We want to go next to the factory with three shifts," or the fertilizer plant, or whatever the heck it is, right? So I get that. I would say this, in some ways, for someone that lives like near train tracks, and I know Dave lives near train tracks in Windsor, there is some noise that you're gonna get, whether it's transportation noise, or, for me, it's airport noise, where I live in Windsor Locks, you know, and that's just part of it to a certain degree, and part of it, you can, you know, in terms of design, you can overcome, right, if you're conscious of it. So I think it all can be dealt with in a sort of a reasonable fashion, between buffers, how you design it, how you locate it. I don't think we're creating something that someone's gonna come in, be able to come in to you and say, hey, you know, there's a factory here, but, you know, right next door, we're building a three-story building within, you know, 20 feet or something, you know? I just, I don't see, vision-wise, how that, they could pull that off, and again, in a pretty narrow area, and if you look up and down where we're going, it's pretty, most everything is fairly benign. But again, I get your point, that if there are residents living there, then in there's commercial activity, how does that, how do they interface, and are people gonna come and say, wait a minute, you know, as you said, Manning Road? I think the real key difference there is, we're going by design on roads that are designed for heavy transportation, and we're using a large acreage site, so that, you know, you can buffer that stuff, and, you know, the owners of the multifamily can, again, because you're building, obviously, so you can rent, and rent successfully, you locate a bit off the road, you know what I'm saying, so that you're shielded from that kind of stuff. And so, I mean, we've tried to build in sort of as many reasonable safeguards as, and certainly as many safeguards as a commission would need, because your flexibility under a special use permit is very broad, right? It's not like, hey, I've got 25 acres, you know, and I'm next to an industrial site, I get my, I get my multifamily, you know?
Right.
That just means you get an entrance way in to talk about it, right? Now convince you guys that this works.
And that's, that's all I'm asking, because there's just too many things. Manning Road, it didn't start with the big place that's down there.
Oh, right, exactly.
And, ah, we're gonna put a warehouse way in the back, nobody will mind, well, now it's this monstrosity and the traffic, and, so, you know, you're kind of doing the opposite, you're putting residential in their territory.
Right.
Now, 10 years from now, one of these lots wants to expand or create a factory, now, and working together, it can be resolved. If you look and say, look, those tiny lots, nothing big's ever gonna go, I understand. So as long as it's coming back, I mean, I like it, it's, I think it's great for the community, keep it in the 91 corridor, we'll establish what that is.
Right.
You know, and then, and again, in our, in our bullet points, there's an open space requirement, there's a buffer area requirement, that the commission gets to say, okay, these buffers are adequate. You do, you do look at what's in your other parts of the regulations, because you do have established buffers, but again, you have the flexibility, if you really felt, again, like you were saying, you're near something that's really sort of a bad noise generator, to sort of tweak that and say, no, you know, it's not, it's not 50, I want, you know, I want 60 or 70, and this, these are the plantings we need. So again, it's, the safeguards are in there, again, onsite storage, we're gonna make, we'll make that tweak change. One thing I do want to-
Right.
Kind of hit on is open space. This town has taken a ton of wetlands, escarpments, and everything else is open- This town has taken a ton of wetlands, escarpments, and everything else is open space. And that's not the requirement of open space. It's supposed to be enjoyable land and this and that, and, you know, I will not support that anymore. I don't know about the rest of the commission, but open space is good quality land. It's not just the scrap land that's getting thrown away anyway, so.
This, this open space is not designed to go to the town or be under the town's maintenance or control. This is under the maintenance control of the, of the multifamily units of, of the owner. And really, it's, we, we've put it so it's designed to have like walking trails or pedestrian areas. In other words, it's supposed to have that kind of, you know, utility.
Yeah, absolutely, but some people have said that about other areas, that you'd have to wear waders to walk the trails and it's just not acceptable anymore, so.
I understand.
But I, I think it's a great bonus for the town.
The other thing is, um, we added in language in, in C-12, which requires us to get a special use permit for any part of this that's not residential, where we're going to come in and say, okay, we've done this residential component, but now we have this 10 acres or 5 acres of commercial, and here's what we want to do. There's nothing as of right there, if you put this on the property, it has to come in with a special use permit to say, okay, this is what we want to do. And again, to your point, what it does is say, how does that work with the multifamily you have next door, right? I mean, you know.
Well, the multifamily has to come in for a special use too.
Right, it does.
But what if it's an existing use?
Well, then you get to look at it and say, okay, does this work or not work, right? Or if it, we want to make it work, what, what kind of buffers do we put? It's, none of this is an impossible task, right? None of it's not doable.
They're trying to combine different zones to make a piece work or pieces throughout town work. So, they don't exist right now, and that's what they're trying to do, is pieces that just all abut each other make the best use out of them.
Yep.
So, they don't exist right now, and that's what he's trying to do, is create it so they can exist. And I think with the oversight.
And they may not exist anywhere else either.
Right, and with the oversight and working with quality contractors and owners, I, I think it'd be a beautiful development in the community.
Um, we've also, sidewalks shall be as required, should they be, shall, shall be required. Again, you know, we.
We talked about this last time.
I, I, I understand that, I, I do remember that, Commissioner. And again, we, we talked to staff about it, I'm, I'm sort of, I, it, they would be required along the, the street. I guess the, the question was, what, what's, what's done internally? I mean, we always, our design has sidewalks.
Right.
So, you know, it was, the puzzle was what language to use, I, I guess.
There are other portions that say this, any internal streets shall conform to subdivision standards, including sidewalks and curbing.
Right.
And I, I would be in favor of something like that.
Because, because the only other thing that, that I, you know, I'm just looking at this, just maybe to get off the, the subject a little bit, but, you know, they're, they're suggesting it be, you know, 4.90. I'm suggesting it be 4.70.8, so that, you know, we, we send it into the 70, you know, division of, of Division 4, so, you know, and, and again, then all of a sudden, we have, you know, some, something that sort of defines what, what needs to be done and how it needs to be done. So, I, I think that's a very important aspect, you know, just to begin with, you know, that even, you know, the, the number that we're going to be putting in under is going to be different. If I'm going to get my vote, anyway.
And, and you certainly do, Miss Commissioner, at the end of the day, you get a vote, so. But I, I would say, again, I, I'm not particularly dissuaded from that either way. We actually started out with 40, 4.70.8, and pulled it out and put it in 40.90. And part of the thinking of that and staff's thinking about it is, they, I, I, and I think it's a stylistic preference, because we tried to grab all the other stuff from 40.70 that you need to do.
But, but, but you.
Well, you grabbed some of it.
You got, you got some of it, but you, you need to, you need to have the entire, you know, body of it in terms of, I think that's what allows us to actually review the applications as they come in. You know, regardless of, you know, again, you know, some of these nuances that we're trying to include to say, oh, you know, if, if we're going to do something that's going to be non-residential, then we have to have a special use permit. But, but that sort of allows us to, and allows the public to, to actually have a say in what we're doing too. So, so it's not.
That's there.
Yeah, but, but, but I guess that, that's what, what, you know, I think keeping it in that section would allow us to do it. It gives us more control over, you know, how things are done and, and why they're done a certain way, because all the other residential divisions are done that way.
Right, I, I can tell you, the thinking was at the time, to pull it out, because we had originally started there, the thinking was that ultimately, your regulations are better with each as a standalone, sort of. In other words, okay, you're going to have this special use permit for multifamily. To look at what you need to do to get there, to get the requirements, is to look at 4.90, okay? And not to sort of fishes, because sometimes what happens, even with this, you're going to, you've got to look at sort of other areas to see if you put them in or pull them out.
That was the trouble with our zoning, was that's what you have to do to use our book.
Right, and, and so the, I'm just saying, the design concept that I got from staff was, we like this better than the 4.70.8. But it, you know, because we started there.
Because according to my regulation is, is that, that's what staff had, had advised us to, to include it in that, so, so, you know, because I have it marked up on my, you know, preliminary notes, and, and that's exactly where it was, in, in terms of, we, we wanted to keep it there.
The only thing I would probably do is, if that were done is, only for clarification's sake, because I, for example, in 15, we do, we say you got to do an impact analysis, right?
Yep.
But that's for 50 or more units, whereas in everywhere else, it's only 25. And I would reduce that to 25, because then you have the same control as you have for all those other larger ones.
But I'm saying, see, if, if, if we were going to put this in 4.70.8, I would strip that out and just go with what's in 4.70.
Then that's fine, you know, I don't mind.
Because, you know what I'm saying, now.
It shouldn't be redundant, and I agree, it shouldn't be redundant in terms of, if we're going to put it in 70, right. If we're going to put in 70, let's take out everything that, that's being, you know, reproduced.
Addressed in 70, is what I'm saying.
Correct, right, exactly, and so I think that there's going to be some modifications that need to be made anyways when we're done with this review.
Um, again, beyond that, we looked at putting all the criteria in for a site plan, to make sure that that was all covered. In terms of design standards, again, we talked a lot about that with commission, I mean, with staff and you guys. And again, we all felt comfortable with, with what we had proposed. I know there was some question about density.
Because, could, could we address some of those specifically?
Sure.
Right now?
Absolutely.
You know, because one of the things that we said is, is that, you know, the maximum density, you know, I don't have a problem with 16 units per acre, but it should be per developable acre, not necessarily include all the wetlands and escarpment areas and, and the areas that aren't developable. So, that, that should be, you know, a criteria.
Something we can look at, yeah.
And that's something that I think we discussed previously. Because the other thing is, is I'm looking at the maximum lot cover, and you have 40% there, you know, and, and I think that all the other residential areas are, are somewhere around 30 or 35%. And, and I even looked in, in the business, you know, zones, and the majority of the business zones are only 40%. And, and I don't think that what we want to do is develop a residential zone as densely as we did develop a business zone. So, you know, 40, I think, is totally an extreme. I think that it really should be down in, in the, you know, the 25% range rather than a 40% range, because of the fact that, again, it's, it's, you're not, you know, it, it shouldn't be developed as much as, as a business.
I will note on that point, the, the open space portion, the minimum set aside.
Yeah.
It would address Ken's concern. It doesn't include that sub in other areas of the regulations that say areas greater than 15% slope or wetlands or soils don't count. I would absolutely put that back in and potentially increase the amount of the minimum set aside, because the minimum set aside is, I think, 2,500, it's like per 2,500 square feet in other areas of the regulations. And if this is going to be similar to the other ones, then we need those other minimum set aside standards in there, in my opinion.
Set aside of open space?
So, the, so the, let's see, we're looking at.
C-10.
Open space, C-10, there'll be a minimum set aside of open space equal to $1,000 square.
1,000 square feet, yeah, no, I was.
And in other areas of the regulations, it's 2,500 square feet per dwelling unit. And it also contains other requirements that areas greater than 15% slope or that are in wetlands or soils pursuant to soil studies don't count for that set aside amount. And that addresses Ken's concern that we don't just set aside unusable land.
Yeah, but the set aside is, they're not given to the town.
Yeah.
Right, it's just for open space, but there's nothing in here that says it doesn't have to be, or that it's usable open space right now, because other areas of the regulations say, you can't use things that are going to be escarpments and wetlands.
Well, they could, they could, if they keep it, they'll give it to the town.
Right, yeah, it, none of this, none of this goes to the town, and, and, and part of the thought is, some open space, it's okay to preserve it just as passive. In other words, it doesn't have to be, i- if you go with like, let's, let's do a lot of open space, but it's going to be, it, it's, it can't be sort of in a, none of it can be in a wetland area. What you're doing is, you're sort of diminishing the issue of, it's important to have some just passive open space, right? That just stays natural, that isn't, you know, sort of utilized. So, you know, it's, it's about a mix of that, and, you know, we, we actually, I think, pulled the 1,000, because it was, I think, part of some of the other regs that you guys had when you were talking about other sort of types of multifamily. I, I forget what 4.70.6 had in it, but I think it was the same. I know it was for housing of the elderly, it was 1,000, I know for. Let me see if I can find 4.70.6.
Right, but, but 4.70, 4.70.6 does say 1,000, but, you know, but the, but the actual density is only 12 dwelling units per developable acre. So, so basically, you know, by the fact that you're reducing the amount of, you know, resident, dwelling units that you're going to be putting there, you're going to have more open space or more greenery or more everything involved, so.
Understand the, the, the concept is different than 4.70.6, which is really regulations.
Right, so, so let's not look at 4.70, say, say that that's, you know, the model, if you're not going to use it as the model.
You take out, you, you take sort of the parts that are good and, and sort of not the other parts, and what I'm saying is, the idea for the density, obviously, is, you're trying to get to, to a, a good density that functions well for, as a multifamily unit complex, right? And, and, and you're, you're not trying to sort of create, recreate sort of the Mayfield model, which is basically, again, as I said, very high-rent condo units. You want market rate, but you want affordable market rate. We're not, we're not building something that's not going to be affordable for Enfield. I mean, I don't know what's Mayfield, 1,800, 2,000 a unit, something like that. I mean, you know, that's, that's a different market than what our vision is, and especially when you talk of, with, about younger people. So, the idea was to do that and then, you know, try to give enough open space so that it's obviously, it has some reasonably nice amenities, it, it has some greenscape to it, but not get it to the sort of the point where it's, you know, you're, you're just adding a lot of open, open space. Because that, at, at the end of the day, I don't think is the model, and I don't know if Dave has seen it differently, it's not, not the model we see in most other towns in terms of trying to do this. You are, you are actually trying to create some density near your commercial areas, because you want people to live there, you want them to shop and use your, use your commercial areas and do that. So, you know, there's, and is there a perfect answer? No, but we think, again, working with staff, that we've come pretty close with that. I mean, it's certainly something I would take a look at.
Okay, let, let.
I do have a question, because.
Because I'm making some changes anyway at this point, so looking at others isn't the end of the world.
You keep going back to the Mayfield, and that's upscaled. Are you trying to get something that's kind of like the Proviellians in Manchester? I mean, I'm looking at these, it's 16 units per developable acres, and say we get the 15, 15 acres out of this 25, that's 240 units. Then you have to have some kind of transitional area.
Right.
That's 480 parking places. And my biggest concern, because I have seen Mayfield and how it looms over those houses that are in that residential area, this three-occupied stories concerns me, because if it is budding up to an area there is residential, one or two-story homes, capes, or whatever.
No.
That is, you know, that's concerning to me.
Yeah, and.
These are huge key buildings that you're, you're talking about.
Legitimately so, although our, your commission has seen the plan before in, in its genesis, and, I mean, I think what we're going to do will work very well. It doesn't really impinge on, I mean, there's, there's very nice natural buffers there, as I remember, between.
Because the only.
We're nice natural buffers.
The only thing that I would like to recommend is that, you know, basically, you know, your side yard is 35 feet, and I don't mind having a 35-foot side yard if, if, if it's a budding industrial zone.
Right.
But I think that what we need to do is, is specify that if, if it is a budding a residential zone, that the side yards and the rear yards, you know, have to increase. Only because of the fact that, you know, a 35-foot buffer is basically the width of this room. I just count in ceiling tiles, and it's about 32 feet. So, so basically, you can see where, you know, from my property over there, I can go to this wall and then build a four-story building up here or something. And, and, and the scale of the things, you know, doesn't match. I know that we were discussing aspect ratios, and, and normally, aspect ratios were, had to do with, with the height of the building and the distance between the buildings, and whether it's two and a half times, you know, the, the height of the building. So that, you know, I think that what we need to do is, is address it in terms of, you know, the zone that we're abutting and, and increase those zones that are residential to ensure that, you know, whoever has a house at, along one side is not going to get, you know, sort of affected by the development that, that is being proposed. So that, in that sense, you know, that side yard might be 100 feet instead of 35 feet in a residential zone.
Well, when this was being workshopped, we had talked about the buffer area between the residential portion of a lot like, that would qualify under these regulations and the industrial portion. And the suggestion was, but I'm not sure it's reflected in the text here, is that the buffer that would be, that would already be in our regulations, when those zones are abutting each other, would apply here. But if you then put a different setback requirement in here, then I think it's a different story. So, I do think it's important to specify.
But we do have an issue there, because Mayfield supposedly is following our regulations.
Yeah.
And if you've gone over there on Maple, you'll see, all they have is maybe a three or four, five-foot berm with a vinyl fence. But their second story is looming basically over the, the house that's been there for 40, 50 years.
Yeah.
And they're looking into their house.
Right.
And then the house is along, along Meadow.
Yeah, it's 35.
There was a beautiful buffer, but because they own the land, they cut, clear-cut it, it's gone, and now those houses were bad neighbors to Long Meadow.
They replanted.
They're not very happy, but it's even the, you know, they're saying, well, they're, they're going to plant trees on their buffer. Do you know how long it's going to take?
That's, that's a problem.
It's, it's a problem, and that's what I don't want to have happen here for that neighbor that's been, house has been there 40, 50 years, and all of a sudden, we're going to put something next to it, and.
I think it depends on the layout of the, of land and what's there, if we would have any type of.
That's exactly why I said, every single site is unique.
Right.
And with it coming back for a special use permit, we can address all these issues, because they're all great issues, but does this site have that issue? I don't know, does the next one have a different one? We're not going to know until we see the particular site with the particular design they want to put on it.
But we have to give them guidelines on, on how to design it, and I think these are the guidelines on how to design it, in, in terms of, if we say that if you're abutting a residential zone, your, your setbacks are going to be X amount, if you're abutting an industrial zone, it's going to be Y amount.
Well, I mean.
And that's, that sort of solves that problem.
Well, I'd be using that as part of their open space, so.
Right.
Yeah.
But, 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 but at least it sets a minimum that, you know, from my property line, if you're going to put up a four-story building, it shall be at least 100 feet away or 150 feet away, whatever we choose, you know? But it won't be 35, the width of this room, and all of a sudden, you got a four-story building.
Well, I think putting it into 4.70.
You can't do four-story, but.
Right.
Well, putting, well, putting it into four, if we put it back into 4.70.
It's three occupied stories, not to exceed 45 feet. 45 feet is, you know, four and a half stories, a 10-foot.
Would you try to do beyond occupied stories, obviously, is do some, some design work? We left some ability to do like cupilos or roofing so that it's not a flat building or something. But I think more to all the points about this is, it's sort of, now you get into, how much do you put in? I mean, you can't design a perfect regulation. What you try to design a regulation that, that functions reasonably well and gives parameters, but it's a minimum yard setback. It's not, you may feel like looking at something that it needs a bigger setback. You're entitled to sort of say that's what it's going to be. It's not, it's not a maximum yard setback.
But it's always easier for us to say, okay, if it says 100 feet, you know, we could, it's always easier to say, okay, you can get away with 50 feet. But if we say 50 feet and we want 100 feet, you know, it's always difficult to make the developer to move it because he says, well, your regulations say 35. So why are you making me do 100? If you wanted 100, you should have said 100. And you know what? We're saying 100. So...
Except it says minimum, not...
Right.
A minimum of 100. Right. It could be more than 100, but it's going to be more than 35.
Minimums are generally not modifiable, right? If the minimum is 35 feet, you can't, you can't modify it down to something else. You can say, you know, what, 35 feet doesn't work here and I want 50, you can do that because it's a special use permit and you have the leeway to do that. But you can't sort of start, you know, sort of 100 and we may waive it or vary it because, you know, that, that leads you into a very...
But I think that, you know, okay, we can say, based upon the height of the building, it's going to be three times the height of the building. So, you know, then all of a sudden, it doesn't matter, you know. What's the height of your building? And then all of a sudden, you're going to be three times the height of the building away. So, and again, if you're building a one-story building, you're going to be 30 feet away or, you know, 35 feet away. You know, whichever is greater, 35 feet or three times the height of the building. You know, we can play that numbers game too. If, you know, and then we don't have a minimum or we do have a minimum, but then all of a sudden, it's predicated upon the height of the building.
I think you should have a rational minimum and it's, it's sort of the minimum that, again, sort of flows through your regulations. I mean, we could look at tweaking that on a residential side, I guess. And there's two things. You have the minimum and then you have buffer requirements and the idea that the commission, again, could require greater buffer requirements. Then, then, again, there's, there's a minimum buffer requirement that's set forth, but it could, it could, again, expand out, again, on a case-by-case basis. The danger is to design sort of a regulation that's, you know, so perfect that it's going to work in every circumstance. You then come up with a regulation that doesn't work anywhere. I mean, that's really what happens. So the idea is, you set out some minimums, you set out some criteria, and then you say to any applicant, and you, and it's not like you, you have to necessarily bring in a full design. You can bring in a preliminary layout and say to you guys, here's what it is, here's what we want to put, where do we go with it? And that happens. And you do the ART, you meet with staff and sort of, before you go to a full-blown sort of design, that's what you have. You know, I think some of these changes are excellent, I can have it back, that you've suggested. I mean, again, I think looking at where you want to limit it makes sense in terms of the corridor. I think in terms of, you know, adding the minimum number of criteria design. If you want sidewalks, we can, we can say they're required. I think some of those things, I just, I get concerned when you start to try to sort of really tweak stuff as if you're anticipating every project, they're all going to be hopefully different and...
But what happens is that, you know, we always find the deficiencies, and the deficiencies always come to, to, you know, again, bother us because of the fact that we always have neighbors and neighborhoods that are not happy with what happens. And what we're trying to do is, and that's what planning is all about, try to anticipate, you know, how is it going to affect, you know, your neighbor and how is it going to affect the neighborhood? And this is one way of anticipating it. In terms of, you know, if you have 25 acres and you can't set aside 100 feet from a residential zone, then, you know, again, I'm not sure what you're doing, but, you know, that should be plenty of space. You know, the maximum purview surface you can have, again, according to this thing, is 66, and that's the same as most business uses. So, so again, you know, are we making a business or are we putting a residential thing in here? And I think that's what we're trying to achieve, is this is residential, not business. But it seems like it's more of a business than it is a residential area. So, and I think that's what, you know, my concern is, is that, you know, we keep a residential, not necessarily business.
It's, it's a residential zone, it's multifamily, so the use is obviously a bit more intense. You always obviously have a concern when you butt up against a residential area when you do that. The, the concept of why that is, however, why are we doing this, is because you have an existing residential area that already butts up with a commercial area. So the idea is, if you have that, the concept of putting more houses closer to the commercial or industrial area is not necessarily a good thing. So you try to develop these sort of zones which transition, you have a more intense kind of residential use, but one that's in today's day and age, very needed and very desirable, desirable for communities. I can take you to South Windsor, Windsor, I can take you, communities are doing this kind of stuff all the time. They're building hundreds of these units. They work well. They work well in their downtown areas, they work well near their industrial areas, they work well near their commercial areas. I mean, I see, you know, I see them all over the place and have actually worked on them.
Well, can we move on to other points?
Sorry.
We'll agree to disagree on this one item?
That one I can look at, and we will, again, we're making tweaks. So let's see if I can tweak it in a way that, that addresses that.
And when we come to it, it's either yes or no. That's where we're at.
I appreciate that. And we'll certainly get staff.
Go ahead, if you want to keep going, but we've beat this one.
Oh, I was just going to say, one quick thing to keep in mind with buffers, I mean, in your regulations already, there are buffer yards that are required, maybe not residential, abutting residential. But if that's something you wanted to try and add to this section, you can. And one of the things that is in the landscaping standards regarding buffer yards is that the commission may modify the buffer yard standards when, in the opinion of the commission, the adjoining land users are sufficiently protected. So that gives you a little...
That covers everything and it's an SPR.
That's right. Special permit.
We've got it, so...
I guess what I'm saying is, we put a standard, but, you know, if you said, no, you know, it's too high near these units, these people, then obviously we have to look at...
Then that's where we can jump in and move you back.
Right. I mean, they're, like I said, they're all valid points. He's got a great point, but, I mean, why beat it to death right now? We don't even know what's going there, how close it is to the next house.
Well, Linda says, what happened up at Maple Road there with...
Mayfield.
Right. It's like the house is being swallowed.
Mm-hmm.
I agree with that. That's a valid point, and that's what we're trying to...
Well, you have that control over the way it's gone. Okay, so next...
I just have one more additional point. I mean, so, you know, I would agree with Rich that I'd want to nestle this into 4.70 and include within the scope of that, all of this, the 4.70.3, which is during review of all this, you can then consider all these other items for approval. And that includes additional things that are not currently in the text here, such as natural features are preserved, the character of the neighborhood, the open spaces of the size, design and quality, massing of buildings is appropriate. You know, all of those criteria in 4.70, I think are very important.
If we put it in 470, that'll, everything by default. The only thing I would suggest I'm going to do is try to strip out stuff that's already in 470 so we don't have a conflict.
I think that's right, yeah. So I think if it's in 470...
In other words, like the impact analysis, you already require that. So if you say it again and it says 50, by default, this would control, but you get a debate because you would say, well, no, we intended, you know, 25, but, you know, there's...
I think that's right. The only additional change, if you do nestle it in 470, is you then need to put it into the preamble, which says, defines what items are governed by 470.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Well, yeah, well, I think, doesn't 470 do that? But I'll look.
Yeah, at the top of 470, it says, special residential developments, which include this item, this item, this item, this item. And so we need to add this item because we need to make it very clear. It can be 4.70.5, but it has to say it's actually being used for the criteria there.
And none of, from what I can gather, none of the changes that you're interested in doing, we're going to work on to put them in. I think they can all be done within the context of this hearing because none of it is an expansion of the use, it's more of a limiting factor. In other words, we're not reducing like 25 acres to 10 acres or something. It's all sort of more restrictive, so it should work.
Yep. So just a few other items that...
Yep, go ahead.
I think we had discussed when a similar proposal was workshopped. We had talked about basements, and I don't, I remember that, I think, the town, you know, all the sites in the town currently require basements, and here we're saying basements are not required. Obviously, the trade-off is you get onsite storage, whatever that will mean when it's revised. I just wanted to raise it again because basements seem to have been important at one point.
They are still important, and we did go to court over this at one point, which we did win, or, but if you pass, if you pass this, you're right, you would have to allow other people to do the same thing. What he's doing though is having it onsite within the building that the person resides, which the other applicant did not. He had some that were within the building and some were down the other end of the lot, which didn't work out. And I think it depends on what type of land you have left.
And what kind of, again, experientially, I would say this, and Dave, I think, would probably agree, and he's done more of these than I have by far. I haven't seen any of this sort of type of units with basements in forever. Because, I mean, if you build sort of a, these kind of, what we call very nice sort of large building that, you know, houses, I don't know, how many units per building, Dave, is it 30 or something?
Yeah, it can be 20 to 30 units.
20 to 30 units. Virtually none of them have basements. It just, first of all, it ain't, a big basement like that is not a great place to store stuff. It really isn't. And so what you normally see, I don't know, when's the last one you've done like that?
I've never done...
I've seen them in West Hartford in the really old ones.
Yeah.
And it's weird down there, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, that was one of the problems.
Yeah, and so, you know, I mean, when you go...
A real big basement is kind of a creepy place.
Yeah.
So the, the idea... Basements are utilized. Again, I have designed some buildings that do have basements in quite a few of them, so, you know, regardless of...
Well, not a garden style.
And the presumption here when we're talking about this is that it's going to be this gigantic structure that has as many units as possible, which I understand is a reality. But on the flip side, if it's not, and it's more similar to those sites we have that are more like condos or the seniors, then you would want a basement. And so I think we need to have that discussion because we're presuming a very large item, but this is a text change that applies to other types of uses. So I just wanted to raise that again because we had talked about it at the last workshop. A few other items that I wanted to bring up were the design standards. You know, the design standards as currently written aren't really design standards. I would more look towards 4.70.6D, which says what the units should contain, like laundry, is there mail, are there garages, are there coverage, is there coverage for certain cars? I mean, those are certain design standards that these sorts of higher-density residential places that we should consider wanting or aspiring for. I know it's...
But, see, again, what you...
That comes in, as he suggested earlier, trying to, I don't know, make every rule that's set down.
Right, but we already have them in our regulations. What happened is that they just took what they didn't want out, and that's fine. But it's not like we're trying to create something that doesn't already exist. We do have those regulations that currently exist, and they have standards in there that people can use and the commission has seen before. And it's just, the other difference is that this is just a specific type of parcel and a smaller lot area. So those design standards are there. I would, I guess, suggest that those are things that we would like to have in the town of Enfield, like units that have, for example, even the square footage for these, and I understand the need for higher-density housing, but the square footage here, as proposed in the text change, is smaller than continuing care communities, smaller than housing for the elderly. I mean, how, I guess, how small do we want to go when we're not talking about just elderly housing or community care centers where you know that there's staff that's providing support to people there? Those are just some of the concerns I have. I understand that creation of these, this text change, I mean, it makes a lot of sense, but there's also a lot of things, a lot of things missing that we do require of other higher-density multifamily housing. And I would want some of those back in.
And I agree. And maybe what happens is you can take a look at some of them in terms of, and try to include something that, that would make some sense so that, you know, we do have some control over what's going on.
Again, what I would...
Because if you're doing it, you might as well do it right.
Right. What I would suggest, again, is that's sort of the stuff that you look at more on the case-by-case when someone comes and says, you know, I want this or that. And you're like, well, I think this is what we're looking for with this type of unit or that type. I mean, you can sort of, again, I mean, again, we'll certainly look at it, we'll...
I mean, you could qualify, you know, where, where they actually, you know, pertain in terms of, you know, we shall, you shall have, you know, 25% shall meet, you know, this standard, or, you know, or, you know, you shall have, you know, laundry facilities, you know, at one laundry room in at least each building for the residents to utilize so that they're not always having to drive somewhere. You know, I don't, you know, it's that kind of stuff where they don't have to have it in every unit.
That would come in...
Yeah, normally what you see now, frankly, is each unit has their, that stuff, or it's off-site.
Mandatory.
Yeah, that's usually what we see.
The laundry...
We don't, we don't see laundry rooms anymore in these kind of buildings. It's not, yeah.
It's just one of those things, right? I agree, like, of course, the commission can look at a proposal, if a proposal comes in on a special permit and say, well, this isn't the one that I would have developed, and if it, if it were, this is what I'd want. It's a little bit harder then to say to that applicant, please go back and add a laundry room, and I want two doors over here, and please put a nice bush out. You know, that's a little harder, and we have standards elsewhere.
Yeah, I, again, something like a laundry room, I, most of the people that I've represented that do this stuff would consider that something from, frankly, from the 50s and the 60s. They wouldn't consider that like even something remotely they would consider in a modern building. I'm being honest with you.
I'm saying in unit. We could require it in unit. And that's elsewhere in the regulations that say each unit has a laundry facility. It's just one of those things that, I don't know. I'm done with this.
But we'll, we certainly will, Commissioner, will look at that.
The only thing, the other thing I know, the big use that we did ask, is on your list is like a meeting room or clubhouse or something in, where the people can get together.
I think we had that.
The little kitchen, but it's not, I don't see that, that is listed.
I could add it in the...
Under six, probably.
Community building.
We have a community building, I think so, or no, we don't.
No, I don't see it. There's no community building which would, yeah, that would do with kitchen or something or, so that people can have visitors or take people down there. Or have places to go and play cards or whatever else they want to do. Yes.
So, I'm the newest member here, and I'm going to ask a question because I really don't understand the difference. If they have to come back for a special use permit anyways...
Yep.
Why are we doing a text change? Why don't they just come for a special use permit to begin with?
Because they, at the time, they, what they had...
There's no special use permit for these kind of multifamilies. You can't, I couldn't, there's nothing to apply for.
Okay.
The others, the other ones require a larger lot.
Yeah.
Okay.
The Mayfield is sort of the condo, you know, you got to have a garage.
Have to change your regulation just to get in.
You got to have a regulation that I can argue we can fit.
Argue?
And the lot, the lot they had is both commercial and residential.
I understand, okay.
So to make things work.
Right.
And so you really aren't going to get that many applications for this type of thing.
It's okay.[1768.54] It's okay.
Because once you limit the, the area in which it can go, on the 91 corridor, and then trying to find the acreage.
It's a public hearing, so we'll...
Okay. Anyone in the public would like to speak in favor against this application? Anyone in the public to speak in favor against the application? Come on up, Karen. I apologize, we should have moved you people up ahead of this.
Hi, Karen LaPlante, 166 North Maple Street, and I'm here as a resident. I know this says it's for a transition zone. The purpose says it's for a transition zone between residential, industrial, and commercial, but it's not required. So anything that meets this, our residential 25 acres or more is going to qualify for whatever they want to build here. So I think you've got to look at that carefully, because right now I show at least 30 parcels that are between 25 and 60 acres.
Within the 91 corridor?
Well, no, you just changed that tonight, Charlie.
I know.
So, and you're still not defining within the 91 corridor, so if it's a mile, two miles, whatever.
All right.
If you're more specific, we can figure that out, or staff can figure it out. There's also 26 industrial parcels that are between 25 and 60 acres, but six are already being used with residential dwellings on them, so they may have just a house on them, but it's still being used currently as a residence. So whether they could come in and ask for a zone change to residential and then go build one of these things, it might be something they'd be interested in. So, you know, and, and with the prison, although that, those are industrial areas, they border residential areas, the lake areas, and are they going to come in if the prisons become unused and say, "We want to put in something like this"? So, anyway, some of the other comments I have, I think Rich touched on a bunch of them. Sarah, you touched on a bunch of them, which I'm very glad that the commission's looking at them. And in the multifamily housing district, you require at least four of the amenities. And in this one, you're just saying an appropriate range of services.
Change that, too.
And, and how many did you say?
Four.
Four, okay. And...
Minimum of four.
The multifamily says other deliberately shaped areas or focal features that enhance community space, as determined by the commission, is on the multifamily, but it's not in this. So I don't know why they would have not included that statement. There's nothing here that says, this can't be condos. There's nothing in here that says they can't be, each unit can be individually owned. It can be one common management, under one common management, but it says multi-unit buildings, townhouses, garden apartments, planned unit developments. And I believe with planned unit developments, you own the bill, you own your premises, just not the land. So you might want to look at that a little more carefully. With the open space, Ken, I agree with you. With the multifamily, we talk about areas with greater than 15% slopes or wetland soils, as identified by a certified soil scientist, shall not count towards meeting the minimum requirement, and I think we should have that in there. Sidewalk shall be as required, again. What's as required? I think that's got to be more specific. Onsite storage, is that in your definitions? Does it say how big it's got to be? Onsite storage could be a closet in the apartment, right? I could argue that point. I think I could. You're not telling me it's got to be a storage space of equal size or certain size. If somebody's got a 600-square-foot apartment, they might have a two-cubic-foot storage closet defined. And it might be in a hall down three stories up or whatever, you know? So I think you have to be more specific on what you're talking about for onsite storage. Under 16F, I don't know what potential vies are, but it's probably views. Abutting buildings and land uses surrounding the site identifying potential vies and possible impacts and or opportunities. So... If it's, the minimum lot area says 25 acres. So is it a minimum of 25 acres of residential land or 25 acres of combined land that might be industrial and residential or, or whatever? I mean, is that, is that defined anywhere else? I think it does say applicability in the beginning, and it does say 25 or more contiguous acres, of which a minimum of 15 acres shall be zoned residential. So it looks like you could have as little as 15 acres of residential developed with this density. I like the idea of the developable, developable acres, like the multifamily housing is. I don't like the maximum lot coverage. And the impervious surfaces, you know, if that's what you're going with, with, for the multifamily, I still think it's high, but this is why we have flooding issues. Building height, again, 45 seems a little excessive, especially for residential structures. My apartments are 1,000 square feet apiece or more, and I've got two single guys in them, and they've got them packed to the gills. And, you know, I can't imagine anybody living in 600 square feet. So I think these are very small apartments. I think they're not going to do very well, but somebody wants to spend that kind of money and build them. I guess they, I just don't think we should allow it, you know? You're doing some good changes in, in taking a lot of thought in doing your Thompsonville rezoning, and I think you should take some of the lessons you're learning in that project before you go changing this and allowing it. But the parking spaces, I don't know what, what the parking areas, what it's going to be required for the part, if you're going to require two spaces, two spaces per dwelling unit. I mean, I can't imagine two people are going to be living in 600 square feet, but it doesn't say they can't. And whether both of them will have cars. Both of my tenants are, the current tenants and my previous tenants, all were very pleased with the laundry facilities in the unit. It was very important to them that they had them in the unit. They didn't have to go anywhere to get their laundry done. On the multifamily, the private entrances and no common entrances, that's one of the things that isn't in this part. And a dedicated space. So does everybody just park where they want, or does everybody have a specific spot to park? Because it also says the parking may be located in other zones on the parcel, so they may have to walk over to the commercial side to park their car, which I don't know if I would appreciate that, so. I hope you take a better look at this, a little closer look before you make the change. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to speak in favor of the application? Anyone else would like to speak in favor against the application? Last call, speak in favor against the application. Attorney Smith, you wish to?
No, Mr. Chairman, we've, we've heard the public's comments, and, and again, we'll, we'll take those and also sort of look at them and see if there's anything we can jingle. We can do this pretty quickly. I would anticipate maybe meeting with staff on some of it, maybe next week, and beginning, what, your next meeting is July 12?
12th.
And you would like the material by...
Friday before.
Well, it'd be before that.
Oh, yeah, no, I understand.
We like to say like, like 10 days before.
Yeah, so the goal would be to just complete it next, next week. It's, it's, it's not monumental. It's not like I have to do map redesigns and stuff like that. It's text, text work. So the goal would be to get it to staff in a form that can be circulated to you all for your 12th meeting. That works.
Chair, perhaps if any one of the members have comments, they could send them to Jen within the next day or two.
Absolutely, sure.
Sure, that'd be great. I mean, I...
But you want to get them there before they meet with them, okay.
Truth be told, I review the tape.
All right.
It's better than my notes. It's not as much fun.
Chair, the patient paying a motion to continue. Don't all do it one more?
I move to continue PH 2909 to the July 12th meeting.
Second.
Motion's made, seconded. Discussion, hearing none, all in favor? Opposed, it's unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate your, your time. Thank you very much.
Okay. This is a moment those two have been waiting for. Public hearing 2919. Sorry to keep you, I guess, messed up on setting up the agenda. Secretary, please read the legal ad and take the roll.
Yes. The infill planning zoning commission will hold a public hearing on Thursday, June 21st, 2018, at 7:00 PM in the Town Hall Council Chambers, 820 Infill Street, Infill, Connecticut, concerning the following application. Public hearing 2919, 15 Columbo Drive, application for a new pylon sign for Enfield Medical Center, Enfield Medical Condo Association owner, Agnoli Sign Company, Christina Moreau, applicant, map 57, lot 338, business regional VR zone. Charles Durin.
Here.
Charles Ladd.
Here.
Nick Lefakis.
Here.
Virginia Higley.
Here.
Ken Nelson.
Here.
Linda DeGray.
Here.
Sarah Gruber.
Here.
Garamo Salazar.
Here.
And Richard Suzak is here.
Again, Altonet Salazar will be sitting in for the absent commissioner. Good evening.
Good evening. Christina Moreau from Agnoli Sign Company, and this is Karen.
Karen Krebs, represent the Enfield Medical Condo Association.
Karen, for your information, welcome back to Pecan C. She used to sit up here with us.
I don't know if you need to see the larger version. I brought the larger version just in case. Everybody should have one of these.
Yes.
All, what they're looking to do is, they currently have that sign on the two poles that says the 15 medical, Enfield Medical Center.
If you want to put it up on, here, because it's televised.
Put it on the tripod, because they'll pick it up on the camera.
They, they currently have their Enfield Medical Center sign, and it only says that it's a medical center, and they'd like to display who's in the medical center as a directory to the public, and for a little bit of, you know, I'm going to use the wrong word here, identification of each one of their tenants. So they're just looking to use the existing structure and place a new pylon sign on it, and it looks like a very tasteful sign. And we're seeking a special permit because this has just been approved through the commission to build now, but it requires a special permit before you build it.
I think it looks great. I didn't know half these people were there, and now it's a benefit to the community.
Yeah. So, does anybody have any questions about the sign?
It is.
Square footage of the building, right?
Big part?
Yep.
Square footage allowed for the building size.
Yep.
So they're all checked out.
Right here, I see it.
Right. So, any questions for them?
I'm sorry, they had way too long.
Anyone in the public would like to speak in favor against this application? Anyone in the public would like to speak in favor against the application? Last call to speak in favor against the application. Hearing then, and I will close, 2919, is it? Yep.
Mr. Chair, I'll move that we approve the resolution to approve public hearing 2919, 15 Columbo Drive. Public hearing 2919, I says that dated June 21st, 2018, as prepared by the planning department with the conditions listed. And there's a total of 15 conditions, and there are no site-specific conditions.
Second.
Motion's made, seconded. Any discussion?
I think it looks very nice. It's, it more than serves the purpose, and I'm sure lots of residents will be happy to find you.
That's true. Okay. If you're ready to vote, all in favor? Opposed?
Abstaining.
You're abstaining? All right. One abstention, 601.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry you had to wait. I still have to watch that.
Yeah.
How are you, Karen?
Good, how are you?
I don't even recognize her.
No, it took me a while.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yes, do you want this?
Okay. Anything under other business? Correspondence you have in your packet zoning, regulating, zoning?
Magazine.
Magazine.
This?
No, this.
Yes.
Two of them, actually. I'll pull it out.
Okay, planners' report, Jim, or any commissioner's correspondence?
No.
I think it's, I've seen across the street, it's doing a lot of parking on that grass that, that, right across from Town Hall. They have, do they have the parking lot, the Agnoli across?
Which property? The, the shopping plaza or the...
Oh, no, it's the automobile dealer.
Automobile.
Yeah, I think it's Kia.
Okay.
The Carton Center.
Yeah, right, yeah.
I don't believe they would be allowed to park on the grass. I can definitely pass that along to Rick.
They've been all over the, all over for quite a while now. I just didn't bother calling it in, but...
What's the 472 for? Taylor Road, are we supposed to be?
Uh, she's going to take, she'll take that up under her.
Yep. So that was the first thing I was going to talk to you about, under the director of planning.
The director of planning.
Or the assistant town planners' report. 472 Taylor Road, Shaker Heights. You guys approved this in 2017. Their special permit expired. You gave them extensions. They haven't posted their bonds. They came in again for a reapproval to do the project in phases. Once again, they have, their special permit has expired. So we provided a memo just with the timeline for those who may not have been here, to get you up to speed. So I guess what we're looking from you is how, how would you like us to proceed? We can, you guys can give them another extension to file the bond, or post the bonds for Phase One, but they are looking, they're working with staff to try and figure out what bonds were in place for the property under the prior owner, who informed them that the bonds...
Isn't there a limit for subdivisions on how many extensions you can give them?
Well, I, she called me earlier, and we discussed this, and the last request he had, if you remember at first, he didn't want to do his work in phases. He wanted the whole thing. So he couldn't get the bonding for the whole thing, and I guess Roger talked him into doing it in phases. So he came back in and we gave him permission to do it in phases. And now he's run that all the way out, so...
But there was a whole new application.
Yes, it was. He had to, because it was, it was in phases. Then, so now he's at this point, apparently he still can't get the, the bond, for whatever reason. And he wants to get the former owner's bond, and Roger had told him, as he told us, that he can't because the person of record is the former owner, and that they've asked to prove that when he bought it, that he bought the bond... And Roger had told him, as he told us, that he can't because the person of record is the former owner. And that they've asked to prove that when he bought it, that he bought the bond with it.
If he asks to see the file on the original Shaker Heights, it will give him the amount of money for the bonds that he needs, I would think.
Well, he knows that. He knows the bonds he has to have. They've dug in. What he wants to do is not put up, apparently not give his own money, or get a bond because he's had trouble, is to take the money that's there and use that.
Do we know that it's there? The former owner?
Well, it hasn't been returned, yes.
Are you sure? Yes, Rick checked with the finance department and found the records of bonds.
There is no bond.
You can't, you can't give somebody, somebody else's bond.
That's the point. That's what I've been saying.
So, the guy can release it, finance can release it to the person that gave it to them, but he still has to generate his own bond.
That's right.
What I think he's trying to say is, when he bought the subdivision, he assumed the bonds with it. But, and I know this firsthand, in East Windsor, they, when I sold the subdivision, I had to withdraw my bond from the town, take the money, and credit the new buyer with that money, and he put it in his name at the town. Same money, but that's how it was transferred.
And that's what Jan has said to, has told him?
Yeah.
That if he gets a letter stating that the bond went with it from whoever sold him this, that it included the bonding money?
Yeah.
Then that's fine, but apparently he can't get that or come up with it. I don't know.
That still won't work, Charlie, because the bonds were done in the person, the applicant's name.
Right.
You know, like, Ken sells the subdivision to me-
Well, Shaker Heights LLC, he would have sold the LLC.
Right.
Right.
And the bonds would be in the LLC's name.
It's a subdivision, and subdivision, you have to post your own bonds. I know what you're saying, but in the past, the town has always said subdivision to you who are developing.
Well, the whole thing is, they're not going to release the bond to him because it's not in his name.
Correct. Right, it's not in Shaker Heights LLC name. It's in Mr. Sparadino's name, who was the prior owner. It's not-
It's a big thing. People overlook the bonds, and now the seller's like, hmm.
Well, he should contact-
Well, I got all that money at the town that's mine, and the buyer's saying, no, 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 that got turned over. And that's probably what's going on.
The towns are going to get caught.
No, right. That's why the town does, they stay out of it, and that's the easiest way to stay out of it.
So anyhow, to help Jan, I said, I wouldn't even have him, until he can settle his own problem, come back, and then we'll talk about whatever.
I agree with that.
There's no sense in him getting, even bothering with us until he's got the money or posts the bond.
Well, there's nothing we can do.
There's nothing we can do.
Right, so if he were to post, so I guess what we're looking from you guys is, if he were to post the bond sometime in, maybe July, if he has the ability to do so, he would, it would require an extension from you to allow him to post that bond so that then he can file his special permit. If you're not open to that, he would have to come back before you with another application to get approved again, so that the special permit is once again.
I'd rather have him come back again. It's been how many, is it years? How long's it been?
It's been going on a year.
At least.
At least one year, probably a couple.
How long's it been?
He was approved on... I remember I was not at the meeting. He was approved on March 15th.
What year?
2018, for this most recent special permit, where the phases-
How long's it been going since the beginning?
Your original approval was July 20th, 2017.
2017.
Do we, do we accept letter of credits still?
No.
I have no idea, because we stopped that when we got caught. Were you on the council then? I was on the P and Z. Finance got caught, and the banks weren't honoring anything like that back then.
Because I know Laughlin and Bellawood was all done on a letter of credit.
Yeah, I don't know what they've done.
It just makes it easier for the developers to come up with all the money for the bond.
I have no idea what the town treasurer is-
We can look into that for you with the finance department.
Well, not for me, but I mean, it makes it definitely more builder-friendly in the community.
Yeah.
I have no idea.
Yeah, because every year, the bank will send an updated letter to the town, and the minute that stops, they get a cease and assist on the subdivision.
Well, maybe that's a way to help them out, is if she can find out-
We did it on Bellawood.
In, when I, when I worked for the town, they didn't send yearly updates. They might have sent it to the finance department, but the finance department wouldn't send it to us. And if they didn't send it to the finance department, the finance department wouldn't tell us. So you couldn't get a letter, you know, you couldn't get a violation.
Considering it hasn't been a year, should we just give them the courtesy to extend it?
But last time, didn't we require a modification in order to extend it?
Yeah.
So we could still do that at any point, right? I mean, it's not like there's an expiration date on when we can give an extension until- The other piece of this is that they are looking, they've put in permit, building permits, applications to change what you have approved for each, for a couple of the houses.
So he has to come back anyway, if he's changing something.
So, I mean, the layout of the proposed subdivision is not changing, but there are just a couple houses that they're tweaking the shapes and sizes of.
Yeah, but also, it depends on where those houses were, because he had a problem with the type of house that was going on the property, because some of that property had some steep slopes.
Severe grades.
Yeah, yeah, let's put it that way. Severe grades.
So it is a modification to what you have approved.
So it would depend on what he comes in for, where he's making his changes. So I would suspect he'd have to come in again, anyway.
We were presented with design plans.
Yeah, he was asked for them because of that, yeah.
But now he wants to change them again, so.
So he wants to change them again. He's been doing some nice glossy advertising in, it's a Connecticut mass magazine.
He's one of, he's one of the most reputable builders out there. And the problem is, new construction is dead. So trying to get back on your feet, it's tough, and that's where the letter of credit. If the town of Enfield has a problem between finance and the planning department, that's a town issue, and it shouldn't be held against the developers.
No, it isn't.
That's a very strong tool for the town of Enfield to use to attract these larger developers, because they don't have to come up with hundreds of thousands of dollars cash. The letter of credit, it gets updated, the town keeps updated. The minute it's expired, for whatever reason, it's pulled. Now, who made the decision to stop taking them?
No, there wasn't any decision.
Back when the banks had a problem with them.
Well, I mean, Bellawood's seven years old, and that was all done on letter of credits. Laughlin Road was done on letter of credits.
One of the subdivisions recently, when Jose Guiner was here, it was determined that a letter of credit was to be used, or could be used. And since then, there really haven't been any big subdivisions. I would assume that as long as, you know, finance is happy with it, you know, there isn't a, you cannot do this.
Right. So, so my point is, a tool for planning, maybe we could discuss this with Mr. Pequo and let him know that that option's there, and instead of him beating his head against the wall trying to get this bond, we try to help him go forward, because you're right. Beautiful advertising.
He does.
They're beautiful homes, great additions to our community.
It is.
You know, if we can help them get it finished, because it's been who knows how many years, you know, I think it'd be good for them, for him and everybody else.
Check into that. I have a-
We'll check into that. The other piece of that is that the, the conditions of approval that you approved say that he needs to file bonds. So that would be another thing that he would need to come back for. It would be a modification to the conditions of approval to allow the letter of credit, if that is an option, so.
Let me ask you this, if he has, has he got his designs ready to go?
We have not received, in the planning office, any final plans for this application. So, as far as we know, they, we haven't seen any designs yet. They have something pending.
So all he's done is mention that he wants to change some of them?
Right. So I guess based on what they filed in the building department, they want to change... And Rick has it listed here, the Addison model home and the Berkeley model home for units 41 and 46. So I guess he's only looking to really change two of the new home, two of the homes.
That would be for the whole subdivision, right, that he's doing? Because those are the models.
Well, but he's saying, like, Copley Circle, unit 41, unit 46. So those are two units he numbered.
Oh, right.
The house on a special unit.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Because of the layout of the land. So, if he was ready, and they accept a letter of credit and it'll go that way, I'd say put him on as fast as he can get here, but because, I mean, the time is going. It's the construction season.
Right, and he's probably got buyers that want this particular style.
I imagine he does. Somebody said he has.
That could, that could be the buyers.
Right.
Said, well, move this here.
Yeah, so I'd get him on as soon as, if the town will accept a letter of credit, and he's willing to come in and get the letter of credit, or get, and show us, put him on as fast as possible, and we'll get him in and out of here as fast as possible.
Okay, we'll look into that, and obviously, we'll keep you updated on what we find out.
Thanks, Kenny.
So.
That's a good suggestion. Thank you.
So we'll look into that. So that's, that's Shaker Heights. I don't know if you guys had anything else you wanted me to look into. Another thing that I came across was, we have for 483 Enfield Street, which I believe is the shopping plaza with, has car hardware in there, a comic book store, and also where Crown Furniture used to be. That we- They're not there anymore, correct? So we have a, someone who's interested in putting a-
Crown Furniture. They moved from Springfield because of the redevelopment with the-
Casino.
The, the, yeah, casino. And apparently, they left.
Yeah, so we have a, we have someone who's interested in putting, he doesn't like the term flea market, but it has its multiple vendors inside of Crown, the former Crown Furniture Store. They want to sell antique furniture and that kind of thing, but, so staff kind of looked at it and said, you know, it could be considered retail sales because it's multiple people who are selling items, but ultimately, the commission interprets your own regulations. So we weren't sure if, if, what you would think if that would be, if you'd be open to accepting an application for a retail sales operation there, if there are multiple vendors selling all kinds of stuff, and the vendors might be changing.
Don't we, we already have one on South Road like that? In that little plaza.
Yep, but that's, oh, you're right.
Yeah, it's individual people having like little stalls in that store, and I don't know what they call it.
This is only going to be open three days a week?
I believe his proposal is Friday and Saturday only.
And he already operates one in Springfield?
Yep, at the East Field Mall in the former Macy's site, or the Macy's spot in that mall. He's operating a fairly, a pretty successful business. He just renewed his lease up there for three years, but he's looking to expand down this way, so.
So what's your desire, ladies and gentlemen?
What does the regulation say about flea markets?
Well, I was going to say, flea markets aren't allowed. So, retail, the only thing that I bring up, and I don't want to be a Debbie Downer, but we need to be certain that it doesn't grow throughout the town. You know, we had a member with the problem, you had the tag sales.
Well, I told, when she called me and told me about this, I reminded her that the mall where Bob's is was once a, a single corridor building, and it was a, I don't know, my wife says, I think, a two or three day flea market. And that's all was in there until they, until they spent a lot of money and went to the type of building it is now. They tore out all the little stores and the whole bit. That was, I used to go over there. It was quite an operation, but that was that.
That was my arcade in that place.
Okay, but so what do you want to do on this? I, in some ways, to me, it brings in people into the area, which-
Brings in a different element.
It brings in a different element, it's true.
Is that located behind, or is there actually a store?
It's a end, it's a end towards-
Where the old casino, where that video casino is.
Well, yeah.
Now, is it going to take a lot of the space? Because I know that building has a lot of empty, or had a lot of empty space behind it, in the building, but behind those units was a big open area. How big is this flea market going to be?
Oh, I don't know.
I mean, that's a pretty big building, and what we see out front is just like half the building.
Sounds like they should be coming in and telling us what their marketing plan is.
But we don't allow flea markets. I know what is there. And I know that vendors, you know, you can split it up and call it retail by various owners. But you have to be careful, because if you do it too much, then you're going to have people coming in and saying, that's a flea market. I want to put it out in the American Legion field, and that's a flea market.
The, yeah, in fact, the dealer was in there for a while. Had his used cars and everything else inside. And he had parked the outside. It was-
Yeah, it was, I think it was Hyundai.
Yeah, well, the owner that owns those two or three, yeah, right. And he had, he had that, and then, and he had, the outside storage was on the empty lot next to it. So it's been about a little bit of everything. That's gone through a lot of- I was happy to see the furniture store go in there, but-
Stop and Shop and Bradley's.
Yeah?
Yep.
And the ice skating rink was in there?
Yeah, initially it was, you're right.
From the rink to the arcade.
There was towers. It wasn't, it was towers, it was initially.
Yeah, that and before.
Oh, yeah. Okay. So what do you want to tell her to do?
Yeah, and I'd want you to touch base with the town attorney to make sure that we're not opening up Pandora's Box. You know, make sure that that's something that doesn't fall in the flea market category. You know, if it's vendors, and for the most part, it stays the same, and we're not going to go check, then that probably would be a good use of vacant space. But like Kenny said, we want, you know, how do we know what is, what size it's going to be, or what they're going to be?
I have preliminary, they did give us a preliminary sketch of the space. I guess it's 164 feet long by 57 feet wide, and he wants to put approximately 60 stalls in there. That's the proposal that was provided to us, so.
I don't care how you look at it.
That's a flea market.
That's not in our regulations. I have to agree.
Yeah, no, that's, that's a really big-
South Road's all empty. Next thing you know, it's going to be there.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's true.
Just easy to just say no now, instead of try to shut it down later.
Yeah.
Make them go out of their way just to vote no, you know?
Yeah, it's not in allowable use.
She shouldn't be selling it, that it could be multiple retail sales. That should be them trying to sell that to us.
Okay. Well, if it's focused on one particular type of merchandise, as opposed to t-shirts here and fruit and produce there, that's more of a flea market. You know, if this is focused on one particular type of merchandise, like furniture, antiques.
No, you won't have 60 vendors doing, no.
They're not going to have 60 antique vendors.
There's nobody here to sell that to us. So, with the information we have right now, we could speculate all night long what they're going to do. It's a flea market. It means a flea market.
Either have them come in or tell them no now.
Tell no now.
They'll apply if they want to try and sell it.
But they, it's not in allowable use.
Right, they didn't apply because we were sort of looking for, how can they come in here? And although the guy-
I thought you said 10 heads, 10 heads are better than one.
Right, right. Right, because while flea, again, while flea markets are not allowed, this could be considered retail. So, you know, you guys ultimately-
You need a zone text change.
You could be retail, but for 60 different people at any given time on a Friday?
Right, and that's, that's why I was looking-
That would be like taking Stop and Shop and making it- That would be like taking Stop &amp; Shop and making it, um, Shop Right and taking Stop &amp; Shop and putting it in Shop Right, just keep, you know, moving all the groceries around. It's just not allowed.
Okay.
I move to adjourn.
Do you, do you need a motion on this or do you just, you go with that?
Uh, no, a motion is not required, I was just looking for guidance from interpretation.
Just tell them no.
Um, yeah, I mean, the rest of it is just pending apps, I'm sure we can figure out a legal ad and what you want to see on your next agenda, um, over the phone.
Well, we, we've got a heavy agenda anyway because we've got a lot of open, you've got Elm Street, you've got, uh, this one that we just had with the Attorney Smith and that's going to take some more.
Simon Road's got to be coming.
I'm sorry?
Simon Road?
Simon Road. They've got to be coming pretty soon and I hate to keep these, uh.
I'm surprised they haven't been here a month ago.
Yeah, and there's, um, we have the Metro Park, um, project, which is looking to come before you. We reviewed their wetlands plans, um, and their planning and zoning plans and we're writing them a letter to revise their wetlands plans, um, and we'll include that letter in the submission to, um, obviously to you, so you know what we're looking for from them.
If they got to revise their wetlands plan, do they have to go back to wetlands?
No, it's, um, they just have to revise their plan so they meet the conditions that wetlands set.
I, I noticed on that map that they gave us on Elm Street, it shows wetlands here, but they can't.
It doesn't define them.
It doesn't, yeah, no, but there's a big thing right through the place that it was going to.
They got the opinion.
But I imagine it's all been destroyed or disturbed anyway.
Simon Road?
No, I'm talking Elm Street, I just noticed it, that was something I'd seen. Okay, the motion has been made to, to disband.
Adjourn.
Adjourned.
All in favor?
All in favor.
Okay.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, you did a good job.
Good night.